Hold this meeting in order. Sacramento City Council, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Dickinson. Vice Mayor Chalamontes. Councilmember Plakebaum is expected momentarily. Councilmember Maple. Mayor Potem Gata. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Vang. And Mayor McCarty.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson, can you listen to the land acknowledgement and pledge?
Please rise if you're able for the opening to acknowledgement and honor Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands to the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Midoo Valley and Plains Mewoc, the Patlin Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. And now, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Attorney, do we have a report out from closed session?
No.
Thank you. We now move on to special presentations. The first is World AIDS Day, presented by Mayor Potem Gata and Councilmember Vang.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and Council. We're here today to honor and recognize World AIDS Day as December 1st. It was first declared in 1988 to not only recognize the loss of life, but also to support those living and suffering with AIDS. In June of 1981, the CDC first reported out a new unknown virus that had symptoms that were nothing like they'd ever seen before. Over the next two decades, as millions of Americans caught the virus and died, the federal government would wage war against the disease in the courts, in the court of public opinions. Political leaders on both sides of the Hollywood legislate against the victims. Medical officials in hospitals would deny medical care and treatment to people suffering from the virus. Whole communities would be stigmatized and dehumanized over this virus and who they loved. You know, the first year alone, more than a million Americans, predominantly gay men, would die from the virus at the height of the crisis. Over three million people would die. And over the next two decades, the LGBT community would organize protests and fight the injustice being waged against them by the federal government, medical professionals, and the public. In the end, the AIDS epidemic would cost over four million Americans their lives. This year, even though the rest of the world is recognizing World AIDS Day, this year, President Trump said to the federal government that we would no longer recognize World AIDS Days, AIDS Day. We are here to say that Sacramento will continue to honor with pride those who have suffered, those who have lost their lives, and how we need to continue the education that needs to happen to prevent this disease. That action stripped the funding from the Ryan White HIV/AIDS program that helped so many and prevented the loss of life of so many. Many of us remember Ryan White, who contracted the disease at the age of 13. And when he passed away at the age of 18, I remember being a teen myself and thinking, you know, how a peer of mine could have lost their life and what more could have been done at that age. At an age when you're a teenager and you maybe feel invincible, the disease did not discriminate. We're here today because so many people have stood up and said, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to reduce the stigma, increase education, and most importantly, support the survivors and honor those who have passed away. And in the past 40 years since HIV and AIDS and the AIDS virus was first identified, researchers have been working hard to find ways to curb that virus. As we had our press conference yesterday, something to acknowledge is that the rates have gone down in Sacramento, and that's been done because of great organizations like those today from the Sunburst Foundation. Let's give them a big round of applause. And to... Yes, yes. And to accept this resolution recognizing World AIDS Day, we have Jake Bradley, who will speak on behalf of the organization, his CEO. Paul Curtis, our one and only Director of Community Engagement and Fundraising. Kelly Snook-Fur, Director of Behavioral Health and Case Management. Moina Fong, Office Manager. Michael Janetz, Senior Medical Case Manager. Jerry Petryman, our Prep and Retention Case Manager. And Brandon Lawrence, Medical Case Manager. And before I pass this over to Jake to say a few words, I'd like to pass this over to my colleague, who is co-sponsoring this resolution recognizing World AIDS Day, Councilmember Vang.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem. I think you said most of what I was going to say, so I'll keep my comments really short. I just really want to take this moment to thank Sunburst. Jake, your leadership and everything that your organization has done to really center families and make sure that we do everything we can to continue to live, fight, and thrive despite the current challenges that we're facing. If some of y'all don't know, Sunburst actually, Sunburst Project was actually founded in 1982, before I was born. And it actually began as a summer camp for children with cancer, and then it quickly pivoted to fill the need for children diagnosed with HIV/AIDS. And the organization has only grown and have done tremendous things in our region. And so, really want to take this moment again to thank Jake and your entire staff and give you this moment to say a few words, and thank you so much for your incredible work.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for recognizing World AIDS Day. As you said, it's not something that's recognized everywhere, but it is an issue that must continue to be recognized. As the CEO of Sunburst Projects, I'm privileged to go to work every day and work with incredible individuals, some of which are here, who work with some of the most marginalized individuals in your districts in our community, people living with HIV. For 37 years, we have served the community living with HIV through a variety of services, including medical case management, mental health services, HIV testing, SDI testing, and a variety of other things like food, transportation, and housing, all for zero cost to anyone who walks in our door. And that is incredibly important, because when we're working with the marginalized communities, to ask them to pay to be able to receive those simple services that help them go day to day in life, I think is the wrong thing. And the federal government seems to think differently. So, we continue to trudge on every day, offering those services, finding unique ways through private funding and through foundations and through fundraisers to make sure our doors are always open and that anyone who needs an HIV test has access to get one. Since I arrived at Sunburst in 2020, we've had some big expansion. I'm incredibly proud of our testing clinic. We test more individuals for HIV than any clinic in the greater Sacramento area. 7,000 individual tests alone this year were done inside our clinic, all free to them. I keep saying "free" because I think that's incredibly important, and that is the one thing that we're up against every day to continue to make sure happen. We can charge folks for testing, but to provide it to them for free is to remove the barrier, and that is the most important thing that we can do. Let me talk a little bit in general about our general area, Sacramento County. 181 new HIV infections were diagnosed in 2023, the most latest public data that we have. It's 181 individuals that are living with HIV that didn't know before they had access to a free test. We have approximately 5,000 individuals in the county that are living with HIV, and every day that number continues to grow. And that is because education, prevention, and access are something we need more of. I'm always dumbfounded when I go to places in the community where I imagine there would be a sign or something that says "free testing" or "access to HIV testing" or "prep" would be there, and we often don't find them. Our organization is dedicated to making sure that all of those places know the opportunities and have those flyers and pamphlets and brochures so that individuals accessing other community services know where they can go to come get that. For those living with HIV, I want to give you just a few statistics about what we provided to them. Over 21,000 hours of medical case management in this year alone, and 12,000 hours of free mental health therapy by a licensed clinical therapist, something that we don't get to see very often, but we've made it a dedicated part of our program to make sure that we have that. Behind every person is a number, or behind every number is a person. That's someone who walked in our hallways at the beginning of the day afraid or isolated or fearful of what might be the outcome. We hope that because of the services and because of the work we're doing, that they leave feeling like they're wrapped with the community, that they have the care they need and the access to get what they came for, to be able to go forward and be successful and healthy in life. This resolution tonight isn't just about honoring us, but it's about each one of you up there on the dais, recognizing that HIV is still a problem in our community, and there's still work to be done. So, I appreciate that you guys are giving us the time to be here and talk a little bit about this, for being part of our press conference yesterday, and for constantly talking to your constituents about the importance of public health. Often, I see in the papers and in the media, each one of you recognizing how important that is to the community. So, on behalf of all of us at Sunburst Projects, the staff, our volunteers, and our board, as well as the thousands of clients we have served over the years, thank you for standing with us, for being with us every day, for tonight and for the future, when hopefully HIV stigma is gone and everyone has the opportunity to access care for free so that they can live with dignity and hope. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jake. Thank you to the staff at Sunburst. And I want to thank my colleagues for participating at the press conference, to ensuring that we're pushing out education to ending the stigma. Because while rates are overall down, we see a growth in rates amongst the Black, transgender, and Latino community. Y para mi comunidad latina, la sida no discrimina. And for us, it's important for us to make sure that we continue to educate this with that. Another big round of applause for Sunburst Project here. Councilmember Vang, if you'll join me backstage.
So, Mayor, we now move on to our second special presentation, which is the 2025 City Management Academy graduation, and that will be presented by the Office of Innovation and Economic Development.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ari Green, and I am a Community Engagement Analyst in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the City Management Academy. CMA has been around for 30 years and has seen many renditions over the years, but what has remained is the primary goal of teaching residents and small business owners how the city functions. Each year, we welcome a new cohort with the hopes of them leaving more civically engaged after 10 weeks. I have had the esteemed pleasure of managing the City Management Academy for the past two years, and this year, we received 157 applications. My colleague Danielle and I hosted a cohort of 42 participants here at City Hall. We provided catering from different small businesses such as Tandoori Fire and Chef Burma to support the local economy and introduce participants to different cuisines. We provided parking validations to eliminate barriers to participation, and we went on a field trip to allow participants the opportunity to grasp a deeper understanding of how the city operates behind the scenes. To the 23 city departments and their staff who presented and taught us the importance of their department and how their departments operate, we are grateful for your participation and your commitment to serving the public to the best of your ability. As part of their presentations, city staff were asked to present a civic engagement prompt for participants to solve. These prompts range from outreach strategies to creating programs to issue grant funding. And the CMA participants were tasked with solving these department issues with the group to foster collaboration amongst one another and then give a presentation. This year's winning department would receive $10,000 in implementation to incorporate the solutions based on the participants' presentation. This year's winner was Convention and Cultural Services, whose prompt asks, "How can CCS evolve..." Their prop asks, "How can CCS evolve our offerings in Old Sacramento as a destination to explore and experience the broader history that the district represents?" I must say that Dustin was extremely impressed with the winning group's presentation, and in the same breath, I would like to thank Jonathan Weiser and Dustin Hollingworth at CCS. We appreciate your hospitality as we toured your facilities earlier this fall. Thank you to the procurement team for working with me to determine a method for providing childcare stipends to participants to further reduce barriers to participation in the program. We will be able to implement this year for the next year's cohort. And thank you to city staff for responding to my countless emails as I ask for you to hold space for me and the program again next year. A huge thank you to Mayor McCarty and interim City Manager Milstein for visiting the program this year. And to my colleague and partner in crime, Danielle, thank you for your support these past 10 weeks. Your help and support has been invaluable to me. I'm not sure if she's been able to make it into the chamber. She's helping me set up right now, but thank you. Each Wednesday... And then lastly, to the participants, thank you for your commitment to this year's program. Each Wednesday, you watch two to three presentations from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and each night, you sat, you listened, you asked questions for clarity, and you remain deeply engaged and build relationships. We appreciate your continued interest and enthusiasm to your city and your communities. And then lastly, I just want to invite a participant up to share some insight into their experience. Kealan?
Appreciate y'all. My name is Kealan Johnson. I was in the 2025 class of City Management Academy. Shout out to Ari Green, shout out to the Community Engagement Team, shout out to those who attended to give us their perspective in there and insight on what you do. I gained the perspective that the city, it's a beast, you know, and everybody that's involved in making this city run the way it does, I really appreciate you. I also want to shout out showing love to the indigenous tribes that were here before. Much respect. But my class was amazing. I'm gonna keep it short. My class was amazing. R is amazing. I had a great time. Shout out to Group One. We're gonna make Old Sac pop off. And shout out Class of 2025.
That concludes my presentation, but thank you, guys, for having us.
If the class can come up? Danielle, you too.
Acknowledge you all for, for one, raising your hand to sign up to participate in this. And I know that your knowledge about there, about city government is going to make our neighborhoods and nonprofits and businesses much more engaged, so thank you for participating. Awesome. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay.
Sure, yes.
Just indulge us a little bit, but I'm a proud alumni of the City Management Academy Class of 2016. And I just really can't speak highly enough about the value that it brings, teaching you about your city, how you can be a part of your city and contribute, how you can advocate for your neighborhoods and the issues that you care about, and get connected to all the wonderful people who work at the City of Sacramento who care a lot and deeply about the communities that they serve. And so, really proud of all of you and looking forward to seeing, if you haven't already thought about it, maybe some of you in the audience will consider applying next year. So, thank you and congratulations.
So, Mayor, we now move to the consent calendar, items one through 21. Are there council members that want to pull something for a separate vote or have comments on any consent items? I do have no members of the public signed up to speak. Councilmember Dickinson? Just comments? Councilmember Kaplan?
Comments on 17 and 18.
And Councilmember Vang?
Just comment on number nine.
Perfect. Let's go in numerical order, so Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, I just wanted just to make a comment about this young person, Kelly Wong, who will be appointing to the Sacramento Youth Commission. Kelly is a proud resident of District Eight and as a youth in South Sacramento. Kelly had conversations with my team, and she had shared that so often, her and her peers feel discouraged oftentimes by the policies that we make that influence their lives. And so, she felt really compelled to get involved, and this is the reason why she applied for this position. And if she's watching this, I just want to let her know that this item is on consent, and we're gonna vote and get this passed, and so she will be appointed to the commission. And so, I'm just really excited to appoint Kelly, and I look forward to her serving our community with lots of pride, heart, and hustle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan on 17? Oh, I think Dickinson is in front of you. Pardon me. Roger? Councilmember Dickinson on 17?
Wisdom first.
Thank you. Age before beauty. If I could ask our Intrepid Mobility and Sustainability Division Manager to come down for a moment, and while she's approaching the podium, I just wanted to make a quick comment on this Streets for People Active Transportation Plan, because we're dealing with it on the consent calendar, but it really deserves much more attention than that. It deserves its own spotlight. This is the product of a lot of years of work, a lot of participation, a lot of commentary, and real devotion by the staff to put this plan together. It is an enormous step in the right direction in supporting active transportation for the people of the City of Sacramento and beyond, and I think it deserves that level of recognition, not simply to be adopted without that comment. And so, I want to express how pleased I am to see this plan get to us after all these years. I mean, I can remember going to a community meeting a year before last, and I know that was not the first in a series, so this has been going on for quite some time. Along with that appreciation, I did want to ask a question. As it turns out, the product happens to omit an intersection in North Sacramento that I think is particularly acute in terms of needed attention, and that's at South Avenue and Rio Linda Boulevard. So, my question is, would it impair the plan in any way or violate what you, the work you've done in some way to add that into, amend the plan to add that into the mix?
Councilmember Dickinson, thank you for the kind comments and words on our team moving this forward. So, the intersection of South and Rio Linda, we use a data-driven process to identify intersections for need of improvement. We use the High Injury Network that is part of our Vision Zero work, and we also looked at with the Neighborhood Connections Plan, for which we took to counsel earlier this year and which you adopted. So, that intersection aligns with the intersections that we would identify for intersection improvements. So, if you were to suggest adding that to the plan this evening, that is something that staff would support.
Well, I appreciate that, and I can speak from personal observation that that intersection is both crucial in terms of both north-south and east-west movements in North Sacramento, and it is a location which has been very problematic in terms of safety over the years. So, Mayor, whatever the appropriate procedural step is, I would ask that we add that to the plan.
Sure. Is that doable?
That's doable. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan, you had comments on 17 also?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent with an amendment to add the streets named by Councilmember Dickinson, but I heard you say that motion, right? You said that motion, and I'm happy to second it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
So, he's moving consent with the added street included in the plan, and I'm happy to second your addition to that. Just a quick question, but I want to also thank Jeff and Sharice and your entire staff who put, like, years into this, because we need a plan that prioritizes people over automobiles, and this is just one step of many. But following up on Councilmember Dickinson's question, because this has been a conversation I've had a lot of, there are streets in Natomas that haven't been around as a lot of others, so we don't have as much data. How often are streets and intersections going to be reviewed as to are they part of the High Injury Network, and do they need improvement?
Councilmember Kaplan, that is a wonderful question. We are updating our Vision Zero Action Plan at this time, conducting the data analysis, and we will be bringing up a new set of data with new analysis forward for public review and input beginning in early 2026. So, at that point, we'll be able to, once we go through the process, update the High Injury Network and bring that before council so that we can revisit the work that we do.
And then, if we change what streets or intersections are priorities, will that be melded into this? So that I don't want things to be in silos, but how can we have these as, like, living documents?
I don't have an easy answer for you, Councilmember. I would say that first thing we'll do is update the High Injury Network and then see what changes happen from there and then work with you, because not only do we have the work through the Streets for People Plan, but of course, we have our tag team, right? And so, Megan is here in the audience this evening, and so, anything that is not necessarily in this plan, but is something that maybe could be a quick build, we can talk with Megan and her team about looking at those.
Just because I want to make sure staff does wonderful plans, and this does prioritize our streets and youth and safety and dedicated bike lanes and more shade and everything, but how does that integrate into our transportation priority plan, quick builds, making streets safer? So, I look forward, because I know there isn't an answer now, but I think it's really important when we look at the next steps, how do we take this plan and meld it and make sure that there are updates that come to us, that this is an actual living document, that we as a council continue to implement, where more importantly, the funding stream. So, that's where I am hoping that we can find ways to put something in front of the voters, to make sure that we can implement maintaining our sidewalks and our streets and not just downtown having protected bike lanes. Our suburbs deserve that as well. So, thank you for all of that work.
Thank you.
Councilmember, you had comments on 18?
Yes. On item 18, which I love that this is really just updating our California Building Code standards, but I would like to float something that I hope council members start having conversations and thinking about, because you're seeing this done in other cities. The allowing single stair walk-ups for new buildings that are only three stories high. I know that our fire department is absolutely opposed to that, but when we look at how do we build housing faster on smaller lots, how can we potentially have new buildings that are only three stories high and maybe they have six units? You see that happening all the time in Seattle, and that's another way that we could potentially look at it, because we do have those safety standards. And I understand the reasons for the fire department being opposed to it, but I think it's worth taking another look of is that something that we as a city, when we're looking at prioritizing building housing and quickly, can we be open to smaller units that have three stories and a single-story walk-up? But otherwise, thank you to the team for all that they do.
Thank you. So, Mayor, you have a motion by Councilmember Dickinson and a second by Kaplan?
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He knows their abstentions. Hearing none. Item passes with the amendment from Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you. So, Mayor, with your approval, we are going to reorder the agenda. We're going to take item number 24 next. We'll then take 22, 25, and 23. So, item 24 is Waterfront Reinvestment Program and Resolution Declaring Official Intent to Reimburse Certain Expenditures from the Proceeds of Tax-Exempt Obligations.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Dustin Hollingsworth, the Assistant Director of the Department of Convention and Cultural Services. I'm joined today by Ellen Sullivan from the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, as well as staff from the Treasurer's Office. I have the pleasure of speaking to you today about the Waterfront Reinvestment Program. I'm here to provide you with an update on the program, to ask you to pass a motion supporting the refacing of the program and to pass a resolution declaring the city's official intent to reimburse certain expenditures related to the program from the future proceeds of tax obligations or bonds. But first, why Old Sacramento? Old Sacramento is a strategic destination that serves over 4 million visitors every year. With close proximity to other downtown amenities, such as the Convention Center, Doco, and the rail yards, offerings amplified when you consider the temporary relocation of the A's just across the Tower Bridge, and the aspirations of a major league baseball team here in Sacramento itself to call it a permanent home. It's one of seven national historic landmark districts in California. It was home to Sacramento's indigenous people long before anybody knew what the gold rush was. It's served as a modern gateway to Sacramento for over 175 years. It's always been the center for commerce, a place to gather, and today, the merchants in the area still rely on it. It's a cultural and civic amenity, offering museums, parades, special events, train rides, boat rides, food, retail, arts and craft. It is an icon of Sacramento. And with all these great things that Sacramento has ahead of us, we need to make sure that our welcome mat is rolled out, and that can be found in Old Sacramento. Looking back a year, November 19, 2024, the city adopted a resolution directing staff to proceed with the implementation of the Waterfront Reinvestment Program. The program included six projects within the Old Sacramento Waterfront delineated into two phases. Phase One included the waterfront site redevelopment opportunity, formerly known as Rio City Cafe, specifically replacing the deck that had fallen into disrepair. The K Street Barge Hole Repair, design of the public market buildings, replacing more than one mile of boardwalks in Old Sacramento that are a defining characteristic of the historic district. The Old Sacramento docks, which was to be funded by a mix of state and federal grants, and the Native American-themed children's play area, which is funded primarily through the use of state grants and other city funds. The estimated bond funding for Phase One at that time was $25 million. Phase Two, which would have been primarily for the construction of the public market buildings, was estimated to be $15 million. At that time, council authorized the city treasurer's office to initiate the issuance of transient occupancy tax, or TOT, revenue bonds, and to bring a separate report to council to obtain the formal authorization to issue those bonds. Working with the treasurer's office to initiate the issuance of the bonds, it came to light that three of the projects on the west side of the flood wall are on property that the city leases from the state, a lease set to expire in 2035. With less than 10 years left on the lease and typical bond amortization of 30 years, we wouldn't be able to use the bond funding for the docks, for the barge, or for the restaurant deck. Until we had a new lease with the state, a process that itself has the potential to take over a year. Staff had to pivot to keep things moving. The state funding originally allocated for the docks was moved to work on the restaurant deck, which was identified as a priority project. That became an opportunity to reevaluate how we would approach the projects as well, reframing Phase One and Phase Two to Phase A and Phase B, with Phase A being those projects that are not contingent upon the renewal of the state lands lease, and Phase B being those projects that are. In the end, it's all the same projects that council had supported a year ago. Current estimates, although early in the process, are still at approximately $40 million total for the entire Waterfront Reinvestment Program. With council's support, we will work to develop a program further focusing on the Phase A projects. We will refine the cost estimates where necessary and return to council in the coming months with a request to authorize the issuance of the bonds to align with the program. That's where the reimbursement resolution comes in. The resolution is the city declaring its official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds, once they're issued. The resolution does not commit the council to issue any bonds or to incur any indebtedness. Each project will still come back to council for approval, and we will make it clear that there is an intent to reimburse from the funds when those proceeds are issued. We anticipate using reimbursable funds to start the design of the boardwalk replacement project, allowing the project to be completed in a timely manner. Reimbursable funds will also be used to cover a gap in the children's play area to keep it moving forward. Essentially, reimbursement is a tool that we can use to continue to move some of these projects forward while we refine the program's bonding needs. We were able to keep some of the projects going in spite of our challenges with the state lands lease. We were able to redirect funding from the state grant of the docks to move forward with the repair of the restaurant deck, as I said earlier. That work should actually be done by the end of the calendar year. We were also able to put out a request for expression of interest for both the restaurant, as well as the adjacent Steamers Building. Staff is currently working with interested businesses to find the right operators for those buildings. The Native American-themed children's play area has been moving along as well. The design was a collaboration with the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians and Wilton Rancheria. It reflects indigenous life along the river with natural play features and themed structures. The play area will be named Montem Chat Nandi, which is Nisanon for along the river. Staff will bring a construction contract and request for authorization of purchase of playground equipment to council on December 9, with construction beginning in the spring of 2026 and anticipated to be completed in the summer. Work has also progressed on the public market buildings. As design began, in order to ensure a successful and viable project, our architects at StanTech brought in Agora Partners, experts in creating vibrant public spaces. Agora conducted a market analysis of the Old Sacramento Waterfront. They looked at the waterfront restaurant site, the public market buildings, the district as a whole, and conducted careholder outreach to understand the ecosystem that these important city assets are operating in and how they can be optimized. They developed a program with financial projections and recommendations to help guide the projects. Per Agora's assessment, the public market buildings can bring value to Sacramento in three different ways: through economic development, by attracting tourism, and by providing retail opportunities. But they do feel that currently, those opportunities are not being optimized. Agora's perspectives and recommendations align with city councils. They believe that in your recent priority setting, acknowledging the importance of economic development, they indicate that the public market site is critical to any successful transformative change in the Old Sacramento Waterfront that aligns with several other analysis that have occurred over the years. They recommend the following strategies when considering design and approach to the market sites. They advised that in order to be successful, the site had to extend dwell times for visitors, extend connections throughout the district, bringing people from Railroad Museum all the way down to the Embarcadero to the children's play area. Other key strategy is to strengthen the Old Sacramento retail through the use of data partnerships, education, and marketing, thinking of the market buildings as an anchor tenant within a mall to draw people into the area so they'll spend longer time there. Physically, the public market sites needed to be designed for activity to be visible while integrating indoor and outdoor spaces. The building needed to attract the right tenants, and they believe that the new plaza between the market buildings is needed as a focal point for activation and experience. When considering how to implement these strategies, either to move forward with new construction or to renovate the existing buildings, it became clear that new construction would be the best path forward. While the renovating would provide the quicker return on investment and lower upfront costs, it would not have the same effect as new construction would, elevating the district and the city as a whole. The concept for this new construction is framed around six jewel box commercial buildings totaling 9,000 square feet plus additional outdoor space available for leasing. The suggested leasing strategy would focus on a mix of quick serve and casual dining. The openness of the space delivers connection between Front Street and the Embarcadero, which is currently obscured by the market buildings. To the north side of K Street, features two jewel boxes, an enhanced waiting and boarding area. You can see how this design opens it up, so you can see the trains across Front Street. The layout really draws you to those trains rather than hiding them behind the monolithic buildings. This area also features a great lawn, which will be a necessary amenity when state parks move forward with building a hotel at the 1849 scene. There's a flex space that's intentionally designed for event pop-ups and seasonal vendors. Front and K makes up one of the most iconic intersections in Sacramento, with a historic Delta King serving as a backdrop. It's also home to a 60-foot Christmas tree and Theater of Lights during the holidays. The proposed design leverages that distinction by opening up the space and providing more room for activation. South of K Street, there are four more jewel boxes, with two of them having the potential to be subdivided. Seating is available throughout, making the connection between indoor and outdoor, and really promoting those longer dwell times in the district, imagining parents going from this area just to the south to the children's play area and then off to the Embarcadero. Few more conceptual designs. And appropriate for the time of year, the Christmas tree. So, what are our next steps? On December 9 next week, staff will bring the children's play area contract and authorization to purchase play equipment before council. In September, staff submitted an application to terminate the existing state lands lease and to reissue a new 49-year lease. The process has the potential to take a year or more, but as the process wraps up, we will restore efforts towards the waterside projects impacted by those lease negotiations. Over the next several months, staff expects contracts for the boardwalk project to come to council, as well as a contract to continue design on the public market buildings. During that same timeframe, we staff will be working on refining cost estimates and project timelines for the waterfront program projects, Phase A, allowing the city treasurer's office to return to council with a specific request for TOT bond issuance. With that, we have members of the treasurer's office, Office of Innovation and Economic Development, our architect StanTech, and Convention and Cultural Services, all available for questions and feedback.
Okay. Public comments?
I have one speaker on this item. Shall we take that now? Chelsea Evans?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Chelsea Evans. I'm the district manager of Old Sacramento Waterfront, part of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership. Downtown Sacramento is a property-based improvement district that has been bringing vibrancy to our downtown core for over 30 years. I'm here today to voice support for advancing Phase A of the Waterfront Reinvestment Program, which is essential for the success of our historic district and its over 150 small businesses. These improvements are critical because they will enhance the safety and accessibility by replacing the boardwalks that welcome more than 4 million visitors a year, increase dwell time and visitor engagement through the redesigned public market buildings and the flexible plaza space, support families with the Native American-themed children's play area, strengthen our small business ecosystem by drawing locals and tourists into the district, encouraging new exploration with the recent updates, and align with the city's long-term priorities in the 2040 General Plan and the Sacramento Riverfront Master Plan. Old Sacramento is one of the city's most important destinations, and these investments are both timely and foundational to preserve our historic district. We appreciate the city's thoughtful approach to phasing and financing, and we stand ready to support the work ahead. Thank you for your continued leadership and commitment to our waterfront.
Thank you, councilmembers.
So, Mayor Protem Gara?
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. This is, you know, one, I want to appreciate all the work that's been done here, and I know that there are issues with the timing and why we need to change the phasing here. Obviously, you know, the docks is something that we have had a lot of conversation about, and we aren't ready at that position to move them forward. But one thing that, while this item here doesn't commit TOT dollars right off the bat, I do have an issue of how the phasing is put together. And I was willing to support the original phasing, Phase One and Two, now we're calling it Phase A and Phase B, before, because it clearly delineated what were the significant, important factors in Old Sacramento. Our docks, accessibility, and also the children's playground that came with state funding. But by moving now, the public market, which is totaled around $17 million of TOT dollars into Phase A, and while we're not committing it, I've seen this song and dance before where we put it in a plan, it's blessed by the council, and then this train kind of keeps moving. And this $17 million project, which I don't think is a bad project, it's not one that we don't, that needs to be done, but when it gets done, I think is important. And I could see this $17 million TOT project all of a sudden being a $24 million project by the time we get going to it. And then the question becomes, what do we do and how are we using all the TOT dollars that we have? And are we going to use the credit card and fill it all up in one time and have a 30-year obligation for this, when we don't know? And frankly, and I don't want to be pejorative here, but I don't know of anyone who says, "I'm going to go to Old Sacramento for tourism or stay the night to go visit a public market." And so, to me, I have an issue with the way that the phasing is set up because of it. And I do want to thank, you know, Councilmember Talamontes' approach, that we haven't had the discussion yet on how do we prioritize our limited TOT dollars that are one-time dollars. And I think we need to have that discussion here, particularly because when we approved for Phase One and Two, we did it with what is the most essential. Yes, I think the children's playground, which comes from state funds, I think is important. Yes, I do think we should get the boardwalk and accessibility done. Councilmember Jennings and I were just talking about the challenges with our parents and our grandparents when we take places. And while I was critical at first, I see the benefit of changing that boardwalk that we have now in front of the Delta King. And we could benefit from that improvement all around Old Sacramento. But I do think that we need to maintain the public market in Phase B until we decide where our real intent is. And our real interest at the council was getting the docks done, getting Rio City Cafe, the old Rio City Cafe, done and back in action. And I do understand there are timeframes, but I do think that's a concern in moving this forward. And while I hear the staff saying, "Well, you're not committing the TOT dollars," but you are asking us to move a project forward early on. So, that's my concern here. I would only support a motion that keeps the public market, because it is such an expensive and a big chunk of the TOT dollars that's used in Section B, until we have a better plan on what to use it for. So, thank you, Mr.--
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Thank you. And like Councilmember or Mayor Protem Gara said, I, TOT dollars are special dollars that, you know, we pass measure N for so that we can invest $1 and get $2, $3, $4 back. And last year, when we moved on this item, I did direct staff to create a two-year plan, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan and framework of how we're going to spend these dollars, and to work with Visit Sacramento and Downtown Partnership, our nonprofits, unions, and business groups, so we can create a really real cohesive plan and direction for the City of Sacramento and how we're going to be able to move forward to attract more people here. So, just direction, maybe like a workshop for next year to our mayor, our city manager, to have a conversation about all our priorities. to have a conversation about all our priorities. You know, we're looking at soccer fields. We're looking at more soccer fields. We're looking at the waterfront on the Garden Highway. We're looking at Old Sac. We're looking at Meadowview, also soccer fields, or mountain bikes, or whatever it may be. There's a lot of ideas floating about what we can do to attract more people to come to Sacramento, to come spend their dollars here, and TOT is our only way of doing so. So we need to be very strategic.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you. I hear my colleagues, but I think we're forgetting that a conversation that happened a year ago at council where we discussed that use of tourism and where tourism comes in, a majority is in Old Sacramento. And we do need to upgrade it, and we do need to refresh it, because one of our agreed-upon priorities is economic development. This is economic development, and I think it's a, we have to separate and not confuse TOT priority, where Old Sacramento, while I would love to see Old Sacramento refurbished, such that more Sacramentoans want to go down there on a regular basis, but it is one of our number-one tourist draws. And you look at what Boston did to their waterfront and how it has changed the nature of the city, I think we would be doing a disservice to, one, what we agreed as a priority in economic development if we did not move this forward. I think the conversation can be is, if we move this forward, that the staff come back and talk to us about the plan for the financing. But we did have this conversation last year about the return on investment, and I don't think it's a bad idea to look at smaller spaces with more green space as the city is proposing. But I don't want to stop this because we're worried about where our TOT dollars may or may not go, because overarching, we have to look at what is for the best of the city. And this has been a work in progress, and a lot of time and effort has been put in. And I understand the concerns and the need for a greater discussion on TOT, but this is our tourist destination. This is how we connect DOCO. This is how we take Sacramento to the next step. I think the biggest tamper right now is I was really upset that the governor and the state put a delay on the hotel. We need a hotel in Old Sacramento. And that's where we need to push our assembly member and our senator and the governor, because a hotel would be amazing there, but for it to be amazing there, we have to do these upgrades. And I understand staff switching it, and I appreciate when they ran into all of these problems with state lands commission, who knew what this needs to do? But maybe the question is, is we move this forward and the next step is it comes back again for a conversation of where is the funding coming from and a greater breakdown? But I would like to make a motion to move the staff proposal and the suggested changes.
I'll second that. I support Old Sac. I just wanted to make sure that the TOT conversation happened.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. Notwithstanding a good bit of involvement in Old Sacramento from different perches over the years, this is my first bite at the apple from this side of the dais. So my impression is that for nine people, there are probably at least 10 opinions up here. But beyond that, you know, it strikes me that we often just seem to be in conflict with ourselves over what Old Sacramento ought to be. And I've not been quite sure over the years whether it's really intended to be a preservation and replication of a certain era, or whether it's supposed to be something that's more modern, or something that's supposed to combine a set of different points in time to wit, "We're going to replace boardwalks, but we're going to leave paved streets." You know, I know this is an old, old debate about the streets, but as an example, when I think about places like Old San Diego, or Williamsburg, or Stirbridge, those are places that really capture the essence of the era that they're trying to frame, both through maintenance of original structures and replication of previous structures. Speaking only for myself, I don't have that sense about Old Sacramento. I thought it was striking to me when we were there for the tree lighting last weekend to have the spotlight on the Ebner, and with a crowd there, you really could get the sense that this was a place that represented a historic era in Sacramento's history. But you take that crowd away, and all of a sudden, it's cars and trucks in a place that's supposed to be the 1850s or the 1860s. And by the way, I think the children, I just want to make it clear, I think the children's playground is great. I think that that is certainly an appropriate acknowledgement and asset that fits. But somewhere along the line, I hope there's a conversation about what it is we're trying to achieve in Old Sacramento thematically. And I don't get the sense from this approach that's before us that that issue is really being addressed, at least certainly not head-on. I do think the public market buildings need to be restructured. I think the conceptual design or layout, I guess I should say layout, not so much design, does make sense. It does make sense to open up the eastern portion of Old Sacramento much more to the waterfront than is the case today. But what those structures ought to look like, I think ought to be something subject to further conversations, further discussion as an example. I'm going to support the motion this evening, but I am going to do it with those reservations, that I hope there will be a point in time before it's a fait accompli, that we do talk about what is it that we want Old Sacramento to be, and what's it going to take to make it that ultimate destination that we hope it will become. It is a major driver of visitors. There's no, there really is no question about that. But could it be a better driver of that if we made some different decisions about what we expect of it, how we fashion it, how we administer it? I think that potential exists. But I don't think we will realize it unless we come to a unified concept of what that theme is ultimately for this part of our, this very, very important part of our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, maybe this is a little too philosophical, but, you know, when I think about Sacramento and what I love about this city, it's the point, being at the convergence of two rivers is such an important part of who we are, who we are as a city, what's important to us, our history and beyond. And so when I travel to other places, especially cities that are similarly situated with these wonderful resources like rivers, what do they do? They build up their waterfronts, right? If you go and visit great cities along rivers and other waterways, they have spaces for folks to gather, to shop, to go to restaurants and beyond, and their community spaces. And that does drive tourism, and it drives our economy. And I've always wondered to myself, before being in this position, what can we do more here? Because I've always felt that we need to do more to make our waterfront a place that's more of a destination for folks, not just for tourism, of course that, but also for the residents here, make it more accessible. So I think this is a step in the right direction, and so I'm excited to support that and that vision, especially as we see this connected to, you know, it's not happening in a vacuum. We have so many other things that are taking place right now, including the rail yards project. And how this all connects together is going to be wonderful, and I can't wait to see that future. But we have to start making these investments now. I do hear the concerns of some of my colleagues, and I think that we do need to have a bigger conversation, especially, you know, around TOT. I agree with the vice mayor and the mayor Protem, that, you know, I think there's a lot of competing interests, and there's a lot of vision that people have for TOT, but it's not entirely clear what our citywide strategy is with TOT. With that said, I think that we move this forward, and we continue to have that conversation, maybe in a workshop, as was mentioned, because I think having a strategic plan moving forward is the right idea, so that we know that we're spending our dollars wisely. But for this in particular, I'm excited. I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm looking forward to supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gara.
Great.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the conversation here. And I do want to thank Councilmember Dickinson for your articulation in this, and to your point, you know, if we don't want this to become, what do you call it, the fiat complete, you know, and we don't want just a policy to just move on its own. And I think that is my concern, because as Councilmember Talimontes mentioned, for every dollar we put in TOT, we should get two more back so we can have another project to move forward. So this item today is a mechanical item. It's a reimbursement item. Now, we're slowly creating a phase and a shift, and I don't want to stop the mechanics of what we have to do to actually get reimbursed for this process. So moving the item forward is appropriate, but for this reason is why I brought up the issue about the phasing. Because if we don't discuss, yes, I believe that this is important as well, but is it, I didn't hear Visit Sacramento come here and say, "Hey, this is going to bring $3 for every $1 we put in." When we use the type of dollars for TOT, they should be able to generate that. And for now, I mean, people come to visit Old Sacramento a lot. It's our number-one place that is visited. But is it why they come to Sacramento and spend their money on a hotel that gives us the two or three? We need to make sure that we make that informed decision before we spend 17, 20, 25, quarter of a million, a hundred million dollars onto a project to fix, you know, a public shed. So that would be my say. So I'm going to vote for this to move forward, as to your point with that reservation, that we make sure that, does this fit in what we're all going to, what all of our needs are? Because I've got a lot, like all of us, we've got a lot of fixes to do, this in our home. It's about when and how much it costs, and when's the right time to do it. So I don't think anyone questions that we need to fix it. In fact, I said that we need to fix it, but the question is, is the TOT dollars, the right time now? And how we use it is important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate the conversation. I will also be supporting the motion on the table, but just wanted to use this moment to kind of give some history for those that, just because I think it's really important. I know I've been in conversation with Vice Mayor Talimontes on working with her to submit a high-level proposal regarding a framework around TOT, and that's really important. Just a reminder for folks, in 2022, Sacramento voters voted on Measure N, and they passed that measure. And I just want to share a little bit of context of why that measure even happened in the first place. One, it was because before the new measure that we now have, TOT, the way that the language was written, was incredibly limited. And we were limited in how and where we could use those dollars. Most of the time, it could only be used in downtown or the safe credit union, but we couldn't spend those dollars in other parts, like in Meadowview, in South Sacramento, in underserved communities. And the mayor, the former mayor and I had a conversation around 102 acres, and if we wanted to build, whether it's a sports complex, some kind of economic engine, right, where would we get the dollars from? And that is actually how we went to the voters, because we wanted to ensure that those TOT dollars was not only spent in downtown, it was also spent in other parts of the neighborhood where we could generate economic development. And yes, it does have to generate more TOT, right? And so I just want to remind my colleagues and for the public, when we have this conversation about TOT, it does need to be a citywide strategy effort. Yes, lots of love for downtown, absolutely, but the intent why the voters passed it was because we talked about making sure that we invested in underserved communities, and that economic development and tourism also needs to happen, not just in downtown, but in low-income communities as well. And so I look forward to that conversation when we have a workshop around TOT and coming up with a strategy on how we're going to spend those dollars to generate more TOT. And so just wanted to put that on record. But I do support, I do believe that we have to also invest in downtown, in Old Sacramento as well, even though I don't represent that area, but I do go to Old Sacramento with my kids and my family. And when people, when I have family members that visit our family, we take them to Old Sacramento, right? And so I think that's important. What is good for Old Sac will uplift all of us, because it's also about generating revenue for the city of Sacramento, and economic development was one of our top priorities. That said, though, we have to remember why the voters voted for Measure N TOT, and it was to make sure we invest in neighborhoods that are often neglected and underserved. And so just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion in a second. I just want to give some perspective on this as well. I'm a big supporter of Old Sacramento. I was touched by the number that 4 million people visited Old Sacramento last year. We know there were, you know, 160 professional baseball games there last year, you know, between MLB and AAA, and with Kings and concerts there, people flow out of Old Sac in greater numbers than we've seen in years before. But look, I have two teenage kids now. They love going to Old Sac, roaming around. When I was a teenage kid, I loved going to Old Sac. I don't think they're always interested in Gold Rush and history. I wasn't always, but Roger, two things can be true. You can appreciate the history and appreciate what else it has to offer there. You can have, they like going out by the Delta King, taking pictures out there, their Instagram pictures, looking at the seals. And they don't know the history of the Delta King always, but we can always remind young people about that. So I think that we need to focus on continuing to make this, as I heard earlier, this is the confluence of our two rivers, this is our city, but it's also a huge place where people are drawn to the core of Sacramento. So I know that this item came up the week before I was elected. I know our prior mayor ran for mayor, and when you look at his platform, it wasn't downtown, the arena, or this and that, it was Old Sacramento, the waterfront. That was one of the things that he wanted to drill in on, and this was the last action that he took. And it was non-binding, and people said, "Would you support that?" I was like, "Yeah, it was an action. We could always undo it." But I'm here to say that I support that action that we took that last hearing in November of '24. So I'm in full support of this. Just on the TOT tax in general, I somewhat disagree. This is not a slush fund to reinvest in neighborhoods. This is cold and calculated, our economic development dollars. We need to invest every dollar here that brings back a solid return on investment. If it doesn't bring back a solid ROI, we have general fund or other opportunities, the state grants, but this is solely focused on bringing back more revenue to our city. That's what TOT is all about. So I support this project, but I do think we have a worthy debate as far as what other projects should be zeroed in on with our TOT dollars, and that's certainly for another day. But with that, we have a motion in a second. All who favor it, please say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions? Hearing none. Item passes. Thank you.
So Mayor, we're going to now move to item number 22, which is a rail yards special sign district and sub-district three digital billboards. And at this time, I will open the public hearing.
I'm going to use my favorite gadget again, please, the overlay projector. All right. Good enough. Mayor, city manager, members of the council, Marco Gonzalez, Office of Innovation and Economic Development. The rail yards item before you today represents another significant step in executing the three-party deal framework for transforming the rail yards that was unanimously adopted by council at the end of 2024 and unanimously approved in the definitive agreements in June of this year. This three-party transaction since the beginning was focused on activation of three key projects in the rail yards. The Republic Stadium, Sacramento Valley Station, and the Historic Central Shops. As part of staff's due diligence to determine project feasibility with our partners, Downtown Rail Yard Venture and Indomitable, we examined the capital stacks of each project to verify how signage revenue plays into the project's deal structures. Without signage revenue, the Republic Stadium and rehabilitation of the central shops will not happen in the near term, and our vision of bringing the three catalytic projects to our central city is put in jeopardy. With that, I will turn it over to Matt Sights with our Community Development Department.
Good evening, Mayor, interim city manager and council members. My name is Matt Sights. I'm a senior architect with Community Development. As Marco discussed, the economic conditions tied to signage in the rail yards, I'm going to speak to staff's work to fulfill our term sheet. I'm going to speak to staff's work to fulfill our term sheet obligations and, uh, City Council's request, uh, for the, uh, rail yard special sign ordinance, uh, through the, through a very simple consolidated presentation. Uh, tonight, um, the presentation covers two elements. Here we go. Uh, two elements, uh, for the rail yard sign district. Uh, the first one is the overall sign district boundary, which is shown here. Uh, each sub-district, um, it, it will be broken down into five sub-districts. Each sub-district regulations will move forward, uh, to City Council as, um, on separate timelines to align with the development potential, um, and the needs for each sub-district. So just to briefly summarize, there are five sub-districts, and as you can see on the, uh, screen, Sub District One, which is the purple area, that is the Sacramento Valley Station Sub District. Then we have Sub District Two, which is the Sacramento Historic Shops, which is in green, uh, followed by Sub District Three, uh, which is in the, uh, tan or orange, uh, for all of downtown rent, uh, Downtown Rail Yard Ventures, uh, properties. And then Sub District Four includes all Indominable properties, which is the red area. And then finally, Sub District Five in, in the blue, which includes all of the cut, sorry, Kaiser's, um, properties. Sub District Three, um, this is the first sub-district, um, within, uh, that has development needs at this point, which is why we're bringing it to you this evening. Uh, this sub-district allows for the maximum of five digital signs, um, digital billboards, and the areas shown in light purple on the screen, uh, those indicate potential billboard locations. All billboards must be on city-owned or leased properties. Uh, in closing, staff is requesting that council pass a motion to determine that the ordinance, uh, is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Sequel one five zero six zero C three and one five three seven eight B two, and then also adopt the ordinance deleting and adding Section fifteen, one four eight, um, dot one nine three of the Sacramento City Code relating to signs in the rail yards. Um, I am here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Public comments?
I have three speakers. The first is Grace Silva. Following Grace is John Starnes, then Amos Dean.
Amir Dean.
Pardon me, Amir Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Grace Silva, and I am a current resident at the AJ in the rail yards district. These billboards are a part of a sweetheart deal that would give away millions to the rail yards developers. And no, we shouldn't have any more giveaways to the developers while the affordable housing is still just at six percent. The hundred and twenty million dollars from the billboards should go to fund more affordable housing to help get us to twenty-five percent, as well as rent stabilization fund to help people stay housed. And while I hear the council claim to want to invest in the city of Sacramento, and while the development of the rail yards may be the investment that you hope it will be, the real investment is in the people who provide the workforce in this city, and that means ensuring that they have a place to call home at the end of the workday. Invest in affordable housing means investing in the people of Sacramento, which is investing in the city itself. On a personal note, while I am not someone who takes a, um, use of the affordable housing, there might be come a day where I might, but with the current state of the economy, we are seeing less housing, and the threshold of who will need affordable housing, rising and rising. So we need to ensure that we are providing the proper care and consideration for our citizens, because if we care about this city, that means providing housing for the people who are gonna live and work here, and ensuring that they're not gonna have to commute one to two hours outside of the city, that we are gonna keep them here and invest in the city. So invest in the people who will provide the workforce that you want in this development, and you can do that with the billboards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Starnes. Following John is Amir.
Been sitting too long, I'm sorry. Those old folks in the Wong Center. John Starnes, I'm from the Wong Center. I'm a resident there, and, um, wanted to first say thank, thank the city for cleaning up all the tents across the, the overpasses there. That was the first comment. A ninety-year-old mother asked me, who lives up there? And I told her that that was the penthouse, and you had to have a special, you know, they're gone now, so it's easier for her to go, wow, that's probably better. The rail yards interest, I'll, just to piggyback on what was already said, um, affordable housing at six percent, that's six hundred units of ten thousand, uh, that's not gonna keep those tents off the streets for very long. They'll be back. And so that, as you develop those, uh, that area, um, we're not here to tell you what works, but developers being served or the tenant or the people, the residents of Sacramento being served by housing, additional housing in the units that are there or proposed to be built. Other than that, being a retired musician, the issue downtown, I used to play downtown. There is no music happening in Sacramento. Nobody goes down there to have a dinner and hear a band or hear live music. That might be something to offer the, the, our restaurant owners, get, give them a break some kind of way to get live entertainment in there. It just doesn't happen here. That would be the first place to look for, uh, bringing life back into Old Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Amir Dean.
I'm Amos Dean. Just kidding, I'm Amor. So I'm here with United here Local Forty-nine and Rail Yards for all. We're here for the same reason that we have been speaking up, excuse me, about the rail yards development since the end of two thousand and twenty-four. There's not enough being done about the housing crisis. Today, council is voting to make special exception for Republic and D R V to be allowed to build, uh, digital billboards. We're not absolutely opposed to more billboards, but we do think that they should be used to help fund community benefits. Uh, though this is not being voted on today, we are opposed to the plan to give D R V and the Republic free leases on city land for those digital billboards. The deal passed last June included, uh, draft zero-dollar leases for up to twelve billboards for thirty-five years in the rail yards area. Based on other recent billboard leases, the market value for those twelve leases is about a hundred and twenty million dollars. A hundred and twenty million is a lot of money. Um, it could be put to much better use. We've been advocating for twenty-five percent affordable housing at the rail, rail yards. There are thousands of people, including Local Forty-nine members, as well as people currently living on the street, who need affordable housing. Their agreement to require just six percent affordable housing in the rail yard was made back in two thousand and sixteen. If Sacramento is going to give more bene, benefits to developers in the rail, rail yards, like this billboard deal or a future E I F D, there should also be more benefits to the people of Sacramento, such as affordable housing and rent stabilization funds. Hundred and twenty million dollars could go a long way toward funding more affordable housing, as well as, uh, rent stabilization funds. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Pluckybaum.
Move staff recommendation.
Second. Councilmember Talamontes.
And Councilmember Pluckybaum, does that include closing the public hearing? Thank you.
Councilmember Pluckybaum, you're so long-winded.
We could learn something from Councilmember Pluckybaum. Just, just remind everybody up here.
Sounds good. Um, all right, so you know, when you go visit cities, New York, large cities, you see billboards everywhere, you see lights everywhere, it's what makes it like a city and gives you that city feeling, so happy to support this. Uh, with that being said, when we passed the term sheet, Councilmember Vang did ask about the dollar amount identified with each billboard and the city's contribution, because we're giving a hundred percent back to the project. So I would like some numbers, um, for the public to understand and, and to know. You know, as we move forward with this E I F D, accountability, transparency to taxpayer dollars is so important to me. So if you can share some light on that, and I know I asked this question in my briefing, so if you can highlight that, that'd be great.
Absolutely, and I do want to reiterate that we're not voting on the leases today, but we do have, uh, Josh Leachman with Downtown Rail Yard Venture, who can give some insight into how the billboard revenue will play into redevelopment of the shops and catalyzing the, the build-out of the rail yards.
So, um, Marco, so just to make sure, when the time comes, on the dollar amount, that will be available to the public?
It is a private transaction, so we're really trying to navigate what information can be shared versus, um, what we can, you know, speak about anecdotally. So I think maybe Josh can come up and maybe, uh, give some more insight into that topic.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
Uh, good evening, Members of the Council, Josh Leachman, Downtown Rail Yard Venture. Uh, as Marco noted, um, this is a, a private transaction between private parties, and I'm actually not at liberty to disclose that amount. Um, but I also wanted to, one, address the gentleman's comment. This is going into a live entertainment venue in the restoration of the Historic Central Shops. One hundred percent of this signage revenue is going back into the rehabilitation of the Central Shops. So, thank you very much.
Um, yeah, I appreciate Vice Mayor Talamontes asking that question. Um, I know if Mayor and Council so choose later on, based on the timeline, to move forward with this, um, those projections we may not have, because it's a private transaction. So that means that, as a city, we may never know how much is actually generated from that revenue. Is that correct, Marco? I just stating it for the record.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I just, you know, again, just want to share, you know, I support the rail yards project. I think it's incredibly important. Economic development is key, so that we can have more revenues in our budget, to be able to provide services. Uh, that also includes making sure that we can also, um, have a community where people can actually live here and be housed as well. And so just wanted to remind all of you that my understanding is that, you know, one of the leverages in our city negotiation to move forward with the rail yards project was this term sheet and the old and expended, expanded E I F D. I know that there was, because there was a residential, uh, protest vote, we weren't able to expand the E I F D. I believe it's on a pause for like a year. Um, but I do know that that was a leveraging point for the city of Sacramento, because I think the argument oftentimes is that the city is not doing anything, we're just approving this E I F D, and we don't have anything to offer, really. And so this is like something we should just take. What I just want to share with folks is that there was several items on the term sheet. One is that, that was security for three years with PD, extending that to thirty-five years, which is three million. And one of the key leveraging negotiation was, um, the billboards in particular, and that, um, as the expansion grows, and if we move forward on the billboards, that the developers would, um, basically take that money of the billboards. Uh, but what I'm hearing is that a hundred percent of it will go into Central Shops, um, as well. Um, so I appreciate you sharing that. Uh, hopefully, when we move further down the timeline, I think for public transparency, I think it's gonna be important to know how much those, um, billboards are generating, because I think that's important for the public to know, because that is something we are giving up as a city if we so choose to do that. I do just want to state for the record that this item, again, um, as Marco shared, is to establish the boundaries for the rail yards, uh, special sign district, right? I see staff nodding their head. Um, and it would authorize up to five digital billboards, um, in Sub District Three, correct? Okay. Um, so I just want to ask the question again, uh, what is the timeline for the item to actually come back for Mayor and Council to actually discuss the regulation of leases and revenues in the larger context?
We hope to be back with the final item on the, uh, Central Shops signage early next year. So we're targeting January for coming back with the leases and for council to make the findings on all of those digital signs.
Okay, great. Um, looking forward to that conversation. I think for me to be able to vote on this item and vote a yes is, I want to see what those projections are. I think that's really important. As someone who is a council member, a policy decision-maker, I don't think that we should be approving, um, you know, uh, billboards in terms of giving revenue to developers if, as a city, we don't even know how much they're generating. I think that's really important for the public to know. And so for me to be able to vote on this, I'm gonna vote yes, because this is just about establishing the billboard, um, district, but in order to actually move forward in January, Marco, I'm looking at you, is that, as a city councilwoman, if I'm gonna take a vote on this, I want to know what the projected revenues are, and I think that we owe that to our constituents and, um, um, our community. And so just wanted to make that request. I know it is a private transaction if we so move forward, but I think, um, in good faith efforts, right, I, 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 as a councilwoman, want to know what those numbers are. Um, so yeah, that's the only comment I have, and with that, I'll, I'll, I'll also be voting yes on this item. Um, but it's just to establish the boundaries, it's not to actually, um, approve the amount or the leases. Yeah, okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, it's never been a secret, I'm not a fan of billboards. Um, I, I believe, you know, some of these lights can be a hazard, so, um, I know this is just establishing the signage district, but are we also working with, when, and I'm assuming signs and electric, they go up, what about light pollution with the residents down there, and what does that look like, and what guarantees are there to mitigate so it isn't creating light pollution?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So, uh, built into this, we all, we already have our light standards built into this specific ordinance. So this follows all the other light provisions we have for all other digital signs, i.e., like the E S C, um, what we do with the standard, uh, standard billboards along freeways. All of that has to meet the minimum, uh, or the maximum light limit allowed during those different times within the day.
So I guess, I guess I want to parse it a little bit. Freeway, eh?
Yes.
Next to residential, because if you look at where the signage district is, it is actually gonna be somewhat close to future, uh, residential. Do we have a higher standard of light pollution or mitigating light pollution when it is next to residential?
So the light pollution, as, as an LED comes up, it's no different than a, a standard billboard or the lighting within, within the area. Uh, the two locations, or the three internal locations, uh, one being directly adjacent to the Central Shops, um, while there is residential being built around that area, we've already taken that into consideration with the ultimate light levels and the light that will be provided within the, that section or that district. Um, on what would be on the north side of Sub District Three, uh, we have required only a single sign, not two-faced, as it's pointing out. And so that's more towards the, the Richards Boulevard, that's, that specific location. And then the final, um, kind of general location being on the south side between Fifth and Sixth and kind of around, around the, the rail, rail tracks, um, those signs are actually gonna be a little bit smaller than, than normal, and it will still, uh, meet the same light, the light quality that we have within that area. And of course, Marco's got something else to say, too.
I always do. Uh, and I just want to mention that every sign needs to go through site plan and design review, so Matt and Bruce will review each sign location as the details are finalized to determine context sensitivity. So all of that will be taken into consideration on a sign-by-sign basis.
So then my next is, I hear that, but there's always changes in advancement and technology and lighting. Um, do we have potentially written into it if there are better, more, uh, light-reducing, you know, no, uh, light pollution, you know, LEDs or whatever version of light that they're using, that best practices be put in, and maybe it's looked at, um, you know, every five years or something like that, to make sure that, you know, we are mitigating as much light pollution as possible?
So we've generally pegged our, all of our light, um, standards based off of the I E, uh, I E S, the, uh, uh, Illumination Society. Um, so all, all of that's based off of that. As that changes, if it get, if it becomes more restrictive, uh, we can always come back and update that, right?
Is there a provision that's going to be put in that, that says that we have that authority? Because if that's not in the term sheet, they can tell us, well, it's not in the term sheet, too bad, so sad.
Well, it, to the point, I, all Well, to the point, all these, all these signs can automatically be dimmed based off of whatever is in place. Could the existing be quote-unquote grandfathered into the old lighting? Sure. But these, the signs themselves, the technology generally runs about 10 years, between seven and 10 years, and then it's updated and will still meet the same standard. So if we're asking, or if you are asking for a lower level of light that is fundamentally pushes it down...
Well, if, let's say, they need to replace it, modernize it, seven years, but new lighting standards have come out, are they required to meet those new lighting standards?
Generally, no, because all the lighting standards are already meeting what the federal...
Which I completely understand. Law changes, leadership changes.
Sure.
So why wouldn't we consider potentially a provision that requires if they modernize or update that they meet the, the latest standards for energy efficiency and light pollution?
Sorry, sidebar.
No, I appreciate the sidebar. Absolutely.
So, and we can come back at a later date and require lower light standards if we're finding that there's a problem. This is a very similar problem that we, we have in general within the city with just regular lighting, not just digital billboards, but lighting itself, the glare, those type of issues that we work through with constituents as well.
Perfect. Like, I really appreciate this because I think it's also not something we deal with every day, but also educating everybody and knowing that, you know, light pollution is, is, is an issue. And then kind of switching my last item, I really appreciate knowing that the funds generated are going back into the central shops. Is there anything at writing, I like trust but verify, is there anything in writing that, that says that that is mandatory, that the revenue must be invested back into the central shops? Because anybody can say anything.
So my part is the ordinance, and we don't have anything in the ordinance, so.
Marco, or City Manager?
So when we bring back the leases, which we're finalizing currently, we can take a fresh look at this. We did, you know, in the process of putting together this deal, look at the capital stacks for indomitable and for DRV. And so we verified that this revenue is needed for these projects, but we'll make sure that we verify, you know, one last time before we bring these leases forward.
Yeah, I mean, it was said publicly. I want to believe them. So if we can put it in writing, why wouldn't we?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Marco, I think I need you back. We've been having a lot of conversations about signage restrictions and how the different leases work with the various providers of signage and supply and demand and the cost of doing ads. So I know you're doing a study, so can you please report to the full council on what that study timeline looks like?
Yes, do we, can we share out who the, who the consultant is?
Hi, Councilmember. So yes, we are engaging with the consultant to go through and verify all signage within the city, whether it's digital or it's static billboards. We have, we're getting the contract in place and we're getting the study taken care of. We're hoping to have that by the beginning of February. That was where we were shooting for. There was a small delay in there. So we're still trying to maintain that same, that same point. So the consultant is going to look at the entire, the city as a whole for all of this and not only just give us the response of whether or not the market's been saturated, if there are specific areas within the city proper, that there is other benefits to putting signage there instead of in other locations. So it's a very comprehensive study, and I think that answers most of your questions.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Vane.
Thank you, Mayor. Marco, can you come up real quick? I just, sorry, my apologies, just because I know you're going to be prepping for the January.
I actually, yeah, I actually have to go now, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Just because I know you're going to be coming back in January. And so you just made a statement that, that as city staff, you verify that those revenue dollars was needed to fulfill, to do this project. So if you verify that it was needed to fulfill this project, when you say verified, does that mean that you have access to those numbers of like what those projections are?
So we did have access to preliminary numbers. And so, so we were just discussing, you know, ways that we can make, because it is a private transaction, there's obviously sensitivities, but we're going to look at what information we can make public in terms of their closing documents, in terms of final transaction documents, so it can become a public record. So something that we'll work with our partners on to see what we can bring forward to satisfy what, what you're requesting here.
Okay, that's great, because it sounds like we have the numbers, then.
We, we have seen the numbers.
Or some way, some, some projections.
Yes, we have seen the numbers. It's just a matter of how we can work with our partners to see what we can share externally.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All's a favor, please say aye. Aye. He knows your abstentions. Hearing none, item passes. Next item.
Mayor, we now move to item number 25, which is resolution pertaining to military equipment use timeline. Following that is our final item, 23, Airport South Industrial Annexation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Clay Buchanan, Sacramento Police Department. I'm here today to ask, tonight to ask you to pass a resolution changing our military equipment use annual report and policy timeline. This, this was, came at the request of the community, the council, and just feedback we've got, we received. Our timeline right now is becoming shorter every year, and therefore there's no time for community input or council input or, or other individuals' input into the policy. The change will, we worked directly with the city attorney's office to get this completed. We came up with a timeline that puts the final approval date at the end of the calendar year, every year. So that gives us our timeline. Our inspection period won't change. We have some milestones in between the, the final inspection period timeline, but that won't change. It just puts the calendar timeline, calendar, end of the calendar year is our final date to get approved. And I think that is what, what has been asked of us. I know I ran it by the police commission, I presented to them, and I spoke with the chair today, and she said I could quote her and say she was good with the timeline and the changes that we made. That's, I keep it brief because I know you have a long night, so that's all I have.
Thank you for following the Councilmember Pluckybaum way. Um, just City Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
I have no speakers on this item.
Oh, we do. Hang on, one second.
We do, sorry.
You can have a seat. Thank you.
I have two items, Skylar, our two speakers, Skylar Henry and Keon Bliss.
Hey, all. I am here. I, I understand that the Police Review Commission a year ago in 2024 put forth a timeline that they were pretty convinced it's, it's not the same as this one that actually would allow a lot more time and consideration of military equipment. It would put it in a better time period regarding budget discussions and community input. Keon can speak to it better than I can, but my understanding is the proposed timeline does not leave adequate time for careful review and consideration, and in fact feels deliberately written to limit transparency and duck as much accountability as possible. If the idea is to honor the intent behind AB 481, this proposed timeline should be rejected in favor of one that leaves ample time for oversight. And I will cede the rest of my time to Keon.
Welcome.
Hi, there, Council. As the former Chair of the Community Police Review Commission, I'm really urging that this council reject the proposed timeline for SACPD's annual military equipment use. The current resolution intrinses a pattern that undermines meaningful civilian oversight, weakens transparency, and actually sidelines the very community voices that Assembly Bill 481 was meant to elevate. Since it took effect in 2022, SACPD has consistently compressed the MEU review process into a schedule that deprives independent oversight bodies of the time needed to review and evaluate how military equipment is acquired, deployed, and impacting our neighborhoods across the city. This new resolution does little more than extend the reauthorization deadline for you to the end of the calendar year while cementing the, the same flawed structure that both SEPRC members and city council members yourselves have criticized for years. This approach does not correct the longstanding timing problems, it actually formalizes them. And maintaining this rushed timeline is more than just an inconvenience for volunteers and staff. It actually strips you all, as our elected members, of the time and context needed to weigh community concerns, fiscal trade-offs, and citywide state safety priorities before voting on complex MEU policy changes as well as substantial equipment purchases. In December 2024, the commission proposed a clear, workable alternative to this resolution, setting SACPD's annual reporting period from December 1st through November 30th, then aligning all mandated steps to ensure each, each party has sufficient time to fulfill its responsibilities. That framework provides two months for SACPD to complete its annual inventory and identify equipment needs, as well as estimate costs and prepare a draft annual report, two months for the commission to review and discuss this draft, as well as coordinate logistics and outreach for the community engagement meeting, and then three months for both parties to conduct and hold a formal public gathering and analyze community input, as well as...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Please take your seat. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Please take your seat. Thank you, Keon. Mr. Bliss, you're in violation of council rules of procedure. If you do not take your seat, will you be asked to leave the chambers? You are, time is complete. Please take your seat. Mr. Bliss, you're in violation of the council rules of procedure. All right, Keon, please, your time is up. You know the two minutes. Thank you. All right. Mayor Protagora? Mayor Protagora?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Please take your seat.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I appreciate the, the time here with our captain, and I do, I do appreciate the work with the police commission to get to where we are. I think that it's evolved significantly, and I do believe that the way that the timeline is now, after our first year of using that timeline, it's going to help us get into a practice of actually being able to have these conversations and engage with our commissioners. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve this timeline moving forward, and then want to encourage the continued work with the commission. And this is a much better improvement than where we have been in the past, where we have a meeting before, we have to hear everything before the state timeline comes into effect. So I'll move the item.
Thank you. Motion, a second. Councilmember Maple.
Yeah, just wanted to agree with Councilmember Guerra and just say that I know that this has been a tough battle trying to figure out with the timing, and it's not for lack of effort. It's been working with the city attorney's office, working with our commission and beyond. And so I just really want to thank you for your work and say that my police review commissioner, who happens to be the Chair this year, sent me a message just to let me, let us all know that she is in strong support, and they've been working in partnership. And so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vane.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to take, just wanted to add a direction, if possible. I think that we've been working incredibly hard over the past couple of years to try to get this timeline right in a way that it is inclusive and allow ample opportunity for the community to provide feedback on the MEU in particular. So as we move forward with this timeline, I would actually like just a report back on the process. Like, was it helpful? Did it actually, you know, did it, did it allow for more opportunity for community engagement? What were some of the lessons learned? Because if the timeline didn't work well, I think it's important for us to revisit that. And so that would be my direction, that we, we implement this timeline, but with the caveat that we bring back kind of lessons learned, and if we need to repivot this, just because, you know, we had, I heard two speakers on this item, and want to make sure that as council, we're just not like rubber stamping this, but also being thoughtful on follow-up to make sure that, that we, we learn, that this is about continuous improvement. So yeah, I'd like to provide that direction if we can report back.
Yeah, thank you. Request is heard. Councilmember, I mean, City Manager, Lainey Millsay.
Thank you. I think, I think that's a great idea. I think it's going to happen on the natural as we have that first year of the process to see how it works and if there are any tweaks we need to make to adjust the timeline. I think that the police department and myself as the Assistant City Manager, who will be working with police at the same time next year, will make sure that happens.
Yeah, I would request that it be included at the end, because I know that at the end of the year, it's submitted to the full council for final discussion and approval. So perhaps during that time, the lessons learned can be applied there.
Noted. Thank you. I just, we have a motion and a second. Just want to focus the...
Is that a yes? I just want to know, because provide a direction. I wanted to know if that is, can we...
I concur with that. That was the maker of the motion.
So that is, okay, thank you so much.
We have a motion and a second. I just want to say the big picture here is that years ago, these decisions were made in the shadows, and legislation was passed, the governor vetoed it, Governor Brown at the time vetoed it and said, no, we want to let the police departments do this on their own. And now there's, there is a public process. I know some people aren't 100% in accord with the public process, but the big picture is now this is something that is debated and presented to the city council and the public on an annual basis, and that's a good thing. So therefore, full support. We have a motion and a second. All's a favor, please say aye. Aye. He knows your abstentions. Hearing none. Item passes. Next item.
Mayor, we move back to item number 23, which is Airport South Industrial Annexation.
Okay, as we bring everybody back, just a reminder, we had a week off, Thanksgiving break. Yes, okay, yes.
Before this conversation happens, pursuant to Government Code Regulation 18702.2, state law requires me to leave and recuse myself from a vote on this because my property is too close to the proximity of Airport South. It is not for my desire not to represent my community, but state law says I cannot have an opinion on the dais, so I will be leaving the room but listening to the conversation.
Yes, we have one more extension as well. So as they leave the room, we'll get our staff ready to go.
And for the record, that was both Councilmembers Maple and Kaplan recusing from this item.
Okay, again, this is a continuation from our item two weeks ago. We heard the proposal from the applicant two weeks ago. We heard from our city staff. We heard plenty of public comment. I think there was 60 speakers last week, a couple hours of, of public comment. We continue the item until tonight because we wanted further council deliberation, so we're going to, to do that. And let me just set the stage of how this next part of the evening is going to work. We laid out a number of ideas and scenarios, questions for city staff, and they were going to do some homework and come back and present to us. So we'll start with, with that. City staff will present to us the, the findings and report backs on some of the ideas we put out there. We, we will not have council deliberation right after that. We will then go to public comment. We're going to let the public speak on this again. I know some of you spoke two weeks ago and may want to say the same thing, but we'd ask you to add something new, if you can, to the debate, as well as brevity would be appreciated as well. There won't be an applicant presentation. If the applicant wishes to participate, they can speak during public comments, as well as any council member can, can bring up the applicant and ask further questions directly. So we will begin now. Staff, please present.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Matthew Ayala, Assistant Planner. I will be providing an update on what was requested of staff at the November 18th hearing. Staff have separated the various questions that were presented into four categories: land use restrictions, state laws AB 98 and SB 415, and buffers, community engagement, and economic and absorption analysis. We would like to begin with a discussion of land use restrictions that staff has proposed on parcel 5. As a reminder, parcel 5 is the northeast portion of the project. At the request to limit the ability of large logistics facilities from occupying the buildings on parcel 5, staff is proposing to impose a restriction in the PUD guidelines that prohibits any warehouse distribution centers on parcels 5D, 5E, and 5F, which are the three small buildings closest to the Westlake residential neighborhood. Warehouse distribution is defined in the city code, meaning a building primarily used for the long-term or short-term storage of goods and materials awaiting transportation or distribution and not generally accessible to the public. Additionally, staff is proposing that on parcel 8, which is the non-participating parcel at the southeast corner of the annexation area... at the southeast corner of the annexation area, the agricultural open space buffer double from 125 to 250 feet, the remainder of the parcel would still receive a zoning designation of M1 Light Industrial. Several Councilmembers were interested in the project's compliance with state laws AB 98 and SB 415. Staff have taken a further look at the restrictions of these bills, beginning with setbacks. As previously mentioned, Parcells 5D, 5E, and 5F will be prohibited from warehouse distribution center uses, and thus would not be subject to AB 98 and SB 415. Ignoring this, however, AB 98 requires a 300-foot setback between loading bays and sensitive receptors on buildings that are under 250,000 square feet. This project provides at least 325 feet in that regard, meeting the AB 98 setback requirement. AB 98 also requires a 50-foot landscaping and screening buffer between the building and sensitive receptors for buildings that are within 900 feet of a sensitive receptor. This buffer is allowed to include parking. Since the applicant has proposed a 125-foot setback with parking and landscaping between the building and the city-owned buffer, the project is compliant with the AB 98 landscaping screening requirement. AB 98 also requires that truck bays be oriented away from the sensitive receptors, which Parcells 5C, 5D, 5E, and 5F comply with and is required as part of the PUD. Parcells 5A and 5B, which are the two larger buildings on Parcel 5, just to the left of the smaller ones, are over 900 feet from a sensitive receptor and would not be subject to the AB 98 restrictions. Should logistics uses occupy Parcells 5C or on Parcel 8 in the future, they would be subject to all applicable state law. There are also several electrification requirements as part of the state laws. To our knowledge, the project is compliant with the following: Title 24 compliance regarding solar and battery; there will be a posting of anti-idling signage; a provision of EV charging readiness for cars and trucks to the Cal Green standards; forklift and small off-road engines must be zero emissions by January 1st of 2030, so long as they are commercially available; and there will be a requirement for electrical hookups and conduit at 100% of loading bays that serve cold storage. At this point in the project, staff is comfortable stating that the project, despite not being subject to AB 98, would comply with the bill. In areas where there isn't a clear answer, ultimately, the project will need to comply with state law. Another request asked of city staff was to condition the applicant to meet with community members throughout this process. Staff is proposing adding a condition of approval that requires the applicant or a project representative to reach out at a minimum quarterly basis to the Westlake Master Association Board of Directors, North Natomas Community Coalition, or other interested groups to provide updates and address community concerns related to the project as the process moves on. Finally, planning staff has been in contact with the City's Office of Innovation and Economic Development, as well as the City's Department of Finance, to discuss questions regarding the absorption and economic demand for warehouse in the greater Sacramento region. Those departments figured it would be best delivered by the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. It's our understanding that in attendance is Mr. Charles Adrian, Executive Vice President of GSEC, who has a short presentation on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor McCarty, members of Council. Again, Charles Adrian, the Executive Vice President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Oh, I'm sorry? I apologize.
Okay.
Yes. I was... I was... Yes. This is at the request of City of Sacramento's staff.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yes. I am providing a presentation of an analysis that was requested regarding not only the regional conditions on industrial real estate, which I'll briefly touch upon, but really also how this pertains to the decision before you all tonight around the policy conditions for the City of Sacramento, and what a development like this really means in the context of the priorities set by City Council two weeks ago.
Well, just if you can just focus on... I know you kind of have two hats.
Yes.
I want you to focus on the technical question of capacity, warehouse, vacancies and that, and then if you can lead your kind of analysis on the need, if you want to come back or have somebody else do the public comment. We're just focusing on the questions, the technical issues right now. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Absolutely. Yes. I think I will begin with this. This is the regional piece. We have... There is ample reason to believe that a development such as Airport South has... is going to meet with significant demand in the market. If you're looking at... I'm just going to give you four brief points on this. We were... Colliers Sacramento's research team and the CBRE Industrial Team were kind enough to provide some really helpful data for us on this. If you look at Metroa Park, it's almost 80% built out, with about 3 million square feet remaining, very likely to be absorbed over the next few quarters. If you're looking at some of the larger industrial spaces in the market, we have a 1.6% vacancy for half a million or more square feet, buildings region-wide, which is extraordinarily low. We... Colliers produced an analysis that estimates we have about one year of built inventory available region-wide, which is in line with, in fact, slightly below the long-run average since 2019. And if you look at built-to-suit sites, there are only two fully entitled sites left in the region that can currently accommodate a 1 million square foot user, and there are active deals in the market that are looking at this, that there are expectations that this may be reduced further within the coming months. So I can leave it here, or I can produce the further analysis that was requested, which was really around the market position of the City of Sacramento regarding this type of product relative to the rest of the region. So if you look at the rest of the region, we did an analysis using CoStar, which is the most-used real estate database for commercial and industrial real estate. They have a rating system of up to 1 to 5 for buildings that are out there, basically indicating the kind of quality that you see in an industrial building or an office building. For the rest of the market, this is vacant... Or properties with vacant or vacancy. There is... You can see here the numbers around 2.62 for an average rating, about 40,000 average square foot availability. In the rest of the region, 40 properties that meet the pipeline that GSEC works, about 2/3 of the pipeline that we work is industrial projects with about an average of 107,000 square feet of a required square footage. So this is essentially a snapshot of... If you look at the rest of the region, there are 40 properties in the market right now that meet the criteria that we would need to locate a property or project in greater Sacramento. 25 of those are graded 4 or 5 by CoStar, so high-quality real estate like what you would see at Airport South. For the City of Sacramento, we are... Generally speaking, available properties are of slightly lower quality rated by CoStar in the City of Sacramento and a much smaller size, which leads to the current condition of having only four properties that meet the requirements of our average pipeline, and one of those properties graded as 4 to 5 star by CoStar. So this basically gives you the overview. In summary, what I think is important to understand here is that the City of Sacramento currently does have a need for additional high-quality industrial inventory, such as would potentially be delivered by Airport South, and enhancing that industrial inventory for the city will enhance competitiveness in the market for the City of Sacramento for GSEC projects in areas like advanced manufacturing and R&amp;D, which is, of course, corresponding with city priorities. So that is the very brief version of our analysis. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to do public comment first and then do all the... Is that complete the city presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comment and then allow Council to further deliberate.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 30 speakers, so I will call a couple names if you'll line up in the aisle. Lisa Tremonte, Doyle Radford, Lionel Barrigan, Alan Green, Josh Garcia. Please proceed.
Hello, I'm Lisa Tremonte. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say, obviously, I'm here as one of the members of the NorCal Carpenters Union, asking for you guys to approve this project, but I'm also here as a member of the community. I grew up in Rio Linda, and I even currently now live in Natomas. So even as a member of the community, I'm asking that you guys approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Doyle Radford.
Good evening, Mayor McCarty, respected Council. Here tonight to speak in favor of this project. We were here two weeks ago, so I'll try not to repeat myself. It was an interesting meeting, right? The Lorax was here, and I was intrigued by that, stayed in character. So I went back and I read the book to try to wrap my brain around it. Took me longer than it probably should have. Luckily, there was pictures that kind of helped me along. But it was about the trees, and if you haven't visited that project, that field is not full of trees. It's primarily an open field. I get it. I've heard that it's farmland. Some of you up there come from a farm ranching background, as my family has very limited access. You can't have a productive agricultural product out there. So, I mean, that negates that, but this is prime for what our folks do, right? I have the honor and the privilege to serve roughly 6,000 men and women that build this community, and we've done so for almost 100 years. This is a good project for it, not only for us, for the city. There's cities in the Oakland, for instance, it's gone, and it's not coming back. You have businesses that want to help this community grow, businesses that want to bring annual property taxes and business taxes to grow the city and be an economic engine. And so we support that. This is a good developer that's built with us in the past. They keep their word. They build with integrity, and more importantly, they build with Launa men and women, and we can thank them for that, and we ask you that you approve this project. Thanks.
Lionel.
Good evening, Council... I mean, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lionel Barrigan. I'm a longtime resident of Northern Natomas Gateway West. That's where... That's my community, which is about, give or take, about a mile from where this project is. I'm in strong support of this project, because it will bring local construction jobs to the community. Also, will give an opportunity to any apprentices who are looking for a career in the construction industry. Also, projects like this will strengthen our local economy and ensure that jobs stay here in our community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Alan.
Good to see everyone, Mayor, District Councilmembers. My name's Alan Green, proud Labor's Local 185 member, with all my fellow members here, and also a trade instructor at Northern California Construction Training. You've heard me brag and cheer and be the number-one cheerleader for that program that's been around for 30 years, making a difference and helping folks that have been formerly incarcerated, are in rehab, homeless, helping them get into the construction trade to start their career and, you know, build that wonderful union pension. Projects like this, I support with open arms, because it creates more employment here in our city, and after that project's built, it's going to create lots of jobs. So thank you for your time. I support this project. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Josh Garcia, then Matt Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. The NorCal Carpenters Union is comprised of tens of thousands of skilled worker... Working brothers and sisters, many of who live right here in our state's capital across 11 trades. In each one of these trades, our military veterans learn to make their mark in building our communities. Seeing that the NorCal Carpenters Union leads the country in incoming members from helmets to hard hats, we created the Valor Committee, which mentors and helps lead these veterans in their transition to civilian life and help them acquire jobs with livable wages in their local areas, where they can once again serve their country and their communities. My name is Josh Garcia, Chairman of the Valor Committee for the NorCal Carpenters Union. Valor and its veterans are in support of the Airport South Industrial Annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Kelly, then Doug Orr, then Matt Newton Boom.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Matt Kelly. I'm here with Carpenters Local 46 in Sacramento. We represent thousands of workers that live in the general vicinity of this area, and we are in overwhelming support of this Airport South project for a few reasons. First, local hire. So you're going to have a... Because what's been talked about a lot is the carbon footprint of this project, but at least while it's built, you're going to have a small carbon footprint. It's like the developer said, if this project doesn't get built, one will in the future. At least this one has things in place where it'll be... Make sure that local hires on the job, reducing that carbon footprint. If it's another contractor doing it, who knows where those workers might be coming from. Also, the local hire would allow the people that are working on these projects that have children to be able to make sporting events, dance recitals, parent-teacher conferences, things like that. And it's just simple, if, you know, the project's in your neighborhood, you're going to take more pride when building it. Also, money that will stay in the community. If the people who are working on this project are local to the community, they'll spend that money in the community, going out to eat, shopping, things like that. It also makes it so we all know how expensive the housing market is. Maybe they're going to be able to own a house in the area, you know? That even is more tax revenue in the end, and it makes it so the community benefit of the project happens at the groundbreaking, not waiting until it's up and running and operational. And then there will be local apprenticeship on the job. Many construction projects will get people off of Craigslist, you know, point, do this, do that, and then fire them when the job's all over. They have no experience and nowhere to go after that. With this job, apprentices will get a chance, you know, the young emerging workforce will have a chance to learn a craft that can lead to a fruitful career, and with the aging construction workforce...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Doug Orr, then Matt Newton Boom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Doug Orr. I'm Associate Superintendent with Natomas Unified School District. Really happy to come back tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to comment again. I've had the honor of growing up in North Natomas on Garden Highway, and then serving now for a quarter century in Natomas Unified. I lead facilities and strategic planning, as well as health, which sounds odd to a lot of people, but for this project, I actually came in a good juxtaposition. So I really want to thank the staff, the Council, for taking the comments into consideration. I really appreciate Mayor McCarty's comments about what's going to happen with the vacant parcel that is not participating. The school district is very pleased to see that the buffer next to the school will double. And then tonight, we learned from the development team, appreciate very much that they are agreeing to plant trees along the edge of our school district boundary, right at the edge of the property that's going to be annexed. So this is a good example of people listening to the concerns. There are 1,000 students and staff that attend that school every day. We do still have concerns about air quality and things, but I think some of the things that were mentioned tonight about potentially electric facilities and things coming into place helps with that. We would, of course, like to see a larger buffer, but we are pleased with the action that was taken, or the proposal. So on behalf of Natomas Unified, I just want to thank you guys again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matt, then Will McKee, then Christian Barrett.
Good evening, Mayor McCarty and Councilmembers. My name is Matt Newton Boom. I am the Assistant Business Manager of IBW Local 340. We're representing 2,500 members across Northern California, and like many of the other construction workers in this room, we support this project. Jobs. Jobs is the talk of the town. It's the talk of the country. Every day, we're getting more and more media reports about unemployment, college kids that don't have jobs to go to for the first time that anybody can remember. This project not only is going to create jobs in the construction sector, but it's going to create jobs afterwards, good ones. To me, this is a no-brainer, and if we were going to pick a spot that we were going to put a logistics center in our city, why would you not put it adjacent to the airport with interstate access? So I hope that you all consider this and support this project with us. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Will, then Christian.
Hi, my name's Will McKee, with IBW Local 340. Thank you very much for your time. I'm an instructor, and so I get to teach students a lot about how to run electrical work, and facilities like this one are instrumental in teaching them how to do industrial projects. This kind of education is so important to have them do hands-on work, and it provides a lot of that opportunity to make them into that workforce that's going to be able to build this next generation, especially as we electrify and go into these kind of things. So strong support. Thank you very much.
Christian, then Jamie Rogers.
Hello, Council. My name's Christian Barrett. I'm with IBW Local 340. I'm a first-year apprentice, and I'm just starting out in the field, and I would like to say I think we should support this project, as I would like to be able to try... to say, I think we should support this project as I would like to be able to travel to this project in a short-term manner. And I live in the city, and as someone that's working here and living here, I would like to be able to have a short travel distance, you know? I've worked in fields as far as Gault, Slow House, and Woodland, but I would like to work in our city. So, I think this would be a great project for, going forward for us. Thank you.
Jamie, then Noah Painter.
Good evening, council. My name is Jamie Rogers, and I am a second-year apprentice with IBW 340. I have a family. I have a wife and three kids, and I used to have an entirely different career that, in hindsight, fortunately ended because with the opportunities the IBW and the apprenticeship program provided, I was able to transition into a new career, becoming skilled and trained while working full-time and being able to support my family. Developments like the Airport South project help local unions and support the working men and women in Sacramento like myself. Thank you.
Noah Painter, then Corinne Garther.
Good afternoon, ma, oh, good afternoon. Wow, it's been a long day. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, Noah Painter, on behalf of IBW and NICA Sacramento, here in support of the project. You know, I think the overall conversation we've had, you know, with this hearing, the previous hearing, is, you know, the city of Sacramento needs to have a conversation about what their economic priorities are. This project's going to generate, hopefully, $30 million in sales tax revenue. I know that there's a long conversation that's going to happen about how we generate more money for affordable housing. This is how you do it. If you could do two or three of these, you fix your structural budget deficit. Ultimately, what we're trying to do here is create innovative projects. We understand that there are concerns that I think have been adequately addressed by the developer for the community in Westlake and also the environmental concerns. Ultimately, these are the types of projects we need to adapt and shift to how people are buying goods and being able to grow our economy in this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Corinne, then John Hershey, then Judith Lamar.
Good evening. First person talking in opposition, I'm a resident of Westlake. I live on Land Franco's Circle. So, if this project moves forward, the vista from my house is going to change from open space and farmland to warehouses as far as the eye can see. And I would just like to say, make no mistake, it is farmland. And I know that both city staff and somebody tonight, you know, was diminishing the value of that farmland, but on parcel five, it has actively been farmed for at least two years, and I can see it from my house. So, I don't know about you, but personally, I would rather have Sacramento continue to be known as the farm-to-fort capital and not as the warehouse capital of California. Couple other points I wanted to make in my limited time. Both city staff and the developer have talked about how this project, you know, has been years in the making. I would just like to comment that, to me, it's a bad project, and a lot of us in the local community don't support it and don't want it, and years of work being done doesn't change that, not to mention the fact that the last two meetings are the first time that in all those years that the council has had the opportunity to review this project, which I think points to the flawed process. I also just want to point out that comparing Westlake and this project to Northlake and Metro Air Park is not an apples-to-apples comparison, because Northlake was built after Metro Air Park went in, so people that bought there knew that they were buying their homes next to a warehouse development, whereas Westlake was built over 20 years ago without any such expectation. And in fact, many of us that bought there were under the impression that that was protected land that was not going to be developed in the future. I also just want to say on the community engagement, that a requirement for the developer meeting with us doesn't equate to them taking our concerns into account. So, while I appreciate that concession, more needs to be done. And also...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speakers, John Hershey, then Judith Lamar, then David Ingram. John, Judith, then David.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is John Hershey. I'm here on behalf of UA Local 447 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters here in Sacramento. I just wanted to kind of touch on the fact that, you know, like, we have a federal government that's contriving ways to, you know, hurt states like California and, by extension, Sacramento. And while the federal government is cutting monies for various projects and programs that would have otherwise sustained these types of career pathways, private investment in projects like this where there is labor on board with it are really important, especially for our apprentices that are going to be coming up and building out, you know, the next generation of hospitals or other infrastructure for our region. And so, just ask that you support this project and to help keep those classrooms open for our apprentices. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith, then David Ingram.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Judith Lamar. I'm here on behalf of friends of the Swainson's hawk, that is, on behalf of the species that's most threatened by this development. And I came back to talk a little bit about the EIR and how it treats habitat mitigation, because this is really a critical, critical point. I think staff and consultants certainly tried to do their best, but there's a depth to this Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan that has been missed in the EIR, as core principles and guarantees have been skipped. And so, the EIR fails to mitigate to less than significant. We've already talked to the council about the fact that the NBHCP agreement, the city promised that they would go to the wildlife agencies before zoning to get the wildlife permit for any land to be added to the Natomas Basin HCP. That hasn't happened. It's important, because you can't come along and mitigate for all the impacts if you're just going to do it at the building permit stage for a warehouse. It has to be done on the large scale. There are significant gaps. They can be addressed in the permit process. The council deserves to have a scientific biological opinion that the mitigation program that they adopt is going to be adequate to fully mitigate the impacts of this project on their beloved Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. The city put this in play, the general plan supports the NBHCP. Now, this project promises to diminish and take away from those guarantees. So, I urge you, don't approve a zoning until you have the wildlife permit. It's important. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Ingram, Heather Fargo, then Ralph Propper.
Good evening, David Ingram. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live on Garden Highway. I've lived there for about 30 years. I looked through the ecomments this afternoon. Everyone in favor, it's jobs, jobs, jobs. Everyone opposed? A multitude of reasons: quality of life, traffic, pollution, endangered species, prior environmental agreements that this city council agreed to, urban services boundaries, unnecessary development. There is a lot more to the picture than just the jobs. And no one denies that Sacramento needs good, quality, high-paying jobs. But when did those only become available when we start paving over farmland, valuable farmland? When did this happen? I don't get it. This is like the fourth meeting I've been to in the same context, with the same sides. I don't understand. I don't understand why we can't have responsible infill development that provides the same benefit that these folks are fighting for. Why are we sacrificing valuable agricultural farmland and open space to get jobs when we don't have to do that? If you drive around some of the underprivileged neighborhoods in Sacramento where we go when we go clean the creeks, because they're so trashed in these underserved areas, there are boarded-up warehouses all over Sacramento. Was that in the, the report that we heard about earlier about, let's get some money coming in from these out-of-state developers to put some money back into the community? And where's the airport tonight? Do they want all this development right around them? I don't think so. They moved out there for a reason. The traffic is already horrific. Who's going to, or is there a plan to expand I-5?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Heather Fargo.
Thanks for having two meetings on this gigantic project that probably should need at least a dozen. I certainly want to, first of all, my name is Heather Fargo, former mayor of Sacramento, mayor when the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan was approved as a mechanism to balance the development of the tomas with the need to preserve the open space, farmland, and habitat of the area. And the city signed a contract, which you're ignoring, and I think that's unfortunate, if not illegal. And I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Council of Sacramento to ask you once again to vote no on this project, or at the very least postpone it until you get your answers in writing. I heard a lot more answers the last meeting than I heard, a lot more questions at the last meeting than I heard answers today. And of course, none of them were in writing, so that you don't get to see the answers, nor does the public. You're going to need to do conditions of approval, which are not yet in writing. Some of the neighbors are going to stand up and ask you, and I know that Vice Mayor Talamantes has been involved in talking with the neighbors about possible mitigation. You really shouldn't be approving this until you see it in writing, until you agree to it, until the public gets to see it in writing, and we agree to it. So, we think that your action tonight, if you are going to take action, is premature. We think you need to wait until you hear, as Jude has said, from the wildlife agencies. Personally, that little report on warehousing was pretty inadequate to me. Hopefully, some of you could read it and understand it. But you do have a lot of warehousing already in the city and in the region that hasn't been taken into account. I know we don't have a lot of time today and never get time to rebut the other side, but as David Ingram said, this is not about jab, jobs versus the environment. We have enough room in this county and in the city to do both. So, please, honor your agreement, respect the habitat, and respect the...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ralph Propper. Ralph, then Lynn Lindsey.
Hello, everyone. Once again, I'm Ralph Propper. I'm a board member of Breathe Sacramento, as on my cap. I was an air pollution research specialist at the Air Resources Board and led the effort to identify diesel exhaust as a toxic air contaminant, which is the number-one cause of cancer from airborne emissions in California. Diesel exhaust is also a major source of ultrafine particles, which have major impacts on children that I described last time. And I recently learned that the Sacramento Metro Air District is planning to monitor for these tiny particles in our county based upon the increasing evidence of their significant health impacts, especially on children. The proponents suggest that space between parcel eight and the school, but a national conference that Breathe put on in Sacramento 10 years ago shows that we need evergreen trees to capture these particles, especially redwood trees are especially useful, but of course, these take many years to grow to the effective height. The EIR calculates a risk of over nine-and-a-half excess cancer risks per million based on the diesel truck emissions, just under the threshold of 10 in a million, but it assumes no development in parcel eight closest to the elementary school, which is not included in this project. The EIR does mention the possibility that parcel eight could be developed with our houses and over 100 trucks a day, which would make the health risk, of course, far exceed the, what's required for mitigation, but of course, the air district can't ask for mitigation because right now, that's not included. So, therefore, I suggest that you either exclude parcel eight from the annexation proposal or call for a subsequent or supplemental EIR that would consider those additional truck emissions that's required by the California Code of Regulations, Section 15162. So, please protect the health of our neighbors and tomas. Thank you.
Great comments. Next speaker is Lynn Lindsey, then Edith Thatcher. Lynn, Lindsey.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Lynn Lindsey, 23-year resident of Westlake, president of the North Natomas Community Coalition. First, I would like to clarify for the record, since it was brought up at the last hearing, the last time the applicant came to NNCC was in 2023 and very conceptual. Mr. Advis last attended NNCC, June 2025, only as a member, no discussion of Airport South. I come before you again to express opposition as opposed. In your resolution for approval, reasons set forth that it is in the best interest of the city to annex 450 acres to construct 6 million square feet of warehouses. Stated in background H, the annexation will provide greater protection from inappropriate land uses adjacent to existing land uses that otherwise would be detrimental to the orderly development of the community. Well, I can't think of anything more inappropriate than a massive warehouse project at the front doors of a community and a school. Although NNCC opposes the project, we have asked numerous times for the opportunity to collaborate before your final vote in order to find mitigations that would require the most, that would reduce the most egregious project impacts. Our December 1st letter submitted conditions for approval, which included, but not limited to, a setback of 1,000 feet of developer land from sensitive receptors, the neighborhoods, parks, and schools. Zone parcel five for highway commercial, hotels, restaurants, coffee shops, retail, as amenities for the community and as transition buffer to the large industrial warehouse complex. We also request parcel eight be pre-zoned as commercial to remove adverse effects that a warehouse complex would bring to passal already school. Thank you.
Next speaker is Edith Thatcher, then Harriet Steiner, then Karen O'Hare. Edith Thatcher, Harriet Steiner, Karen O'Hare.
Hi, I'm Edith Thatcher, and I am also a neighbor of the Airport South industrial project, and as a neighbor, I would like to see this project not happen. However, also, I recognize that there is an enormous amount of force moving towards it becoming in place, and as a neighbor, we would like to have some say in, additional say, in what happens on that land. As the project design goes from conceptual, which it is now, to reality, we would like representatives of North Point to hold working meetings with the NNCC to gather community input and to answer questions and to find solutions to mitigate detrimental effects to the residents. We would like us to have some teeth in this process going forward, which we have not had so far. The other thing I'd like to bring to your attention was that on November 21st, the SAC Business Journal gave some statistics in an article that is at odds with the information provided with the, from the GSEC. It stated, SAC County officials have said, Metro Air Park has 9 million square feet of built industrial space, out of 22 million expected at full build-out. That's 13 million missing, and I just, I don't have the access to the information that they do, but I certainly ask you to please keep that in mind as you consider whether or not Airport South is truly needed. Thank you for your time.
Harriet.
Good evening, council, and, council. I am a resident of Heritage Park in North Natomas. I've been before you before. I still oppose the project, and I would, like others, ask that you deny it, because you can't ever get open space and farmland back again once you decide to line our highways with tilt-up buildings and warehouse spaces. But today, I just wanted to talk for a moment about air quality, warehouses, buffers, and the like. I think it's really important to have more than just discussion. It's really important to have mitigation measures that you have written and have put into the resolutions that approve the environmental documents that say exactly what the requirements are, and that those are put into conditions of approval, and they are firm and they are easy to understand, and that they're enforceable, and that there is an enforceable mechanism so that if doesn't really happen that way, you have the ability to go in and make it happen that way. And I'm talking about air quality and the buffers and the size of trees and how long it's going to take for trees to grow to a size that actually block the particulates from children who, and workers and neighbors who live, who are going to be living in that development. This project is a poster child for why we have SB 415 and AB 98 now, because we have lots of pollution right next to housing and... lots of pollution right next to housing and schools. And so I would ask you to exclude parcel eight because we don't know what's going on and to make the buffers bigger and to actually get everything in writing so that we can read it, and you can read it, and you can edit it if you want to before you take any action on this project, if you should be inclined to approve, which I hope that you are not.
Thank you for your comments. Karen O'Hare. Following Karen is Pat Ferris, then Sally Calligan.
Good evening. I'm Karen O'Hare, and as a former Secog land use planner, environmental attorney, and 30-year-plus Natomas resident, I urge you to deny this project. More information is needed for you to act in the best interest of the city and its residents. You have heard comments on the negative impacts from this project on air quality, habitat, noise, traffic, and health of our children and neighbors, as well as comments that the project will have positive benefits in job creation for the working, for the construction trade. These are temporary construction jobs and are short-term. They would also be created if the proposed workshop was located somewhere else in the city or working on rehabbing the abandoned warehouses that already exist. You each received my questions on the emergency planning, preparedness, and response activities that will be required if this project is built. The city is responsible for emergency response and protection within the city limits. You need this information so that you can do the best decision for our city and its residents. I am also deeply disturbed by the developers' dismissive attitude toward any modifications to this project. At your last meeting, when we were all here, when asked if a bus per zone could be extended, the developers' attorneys cavalierly and curtly said, no. Not that we can consider it, or not that we would be willing to meet with staff or the community, simply no, like this project approval is a fait accompli. I hope it is not. We, your constituents, are counting on you, all of you, to protect us and our city. I am counting on you, as civic leaders, to do the best decision for this city and the Natomas community and deny this project as proposed. Thank you.
Next speaker is Pat Ferris.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Pat Ferris, co-founder of Third Act Sacramento, 23-year resident of Sacramento. I'm an avid naturalist, Californian-certified naturalist. I'm also a business owner. I'm appalled and frankly, really curious. My understanding is that the project is cited in a place that is not in compliance with the Natomas Habitat Conservation Plan, the City General Plan, the County General Plan, certainly not fully within the urban services boundary, the air quality plan, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Now, there's a lot that I have to learn about land use and about civic government. I'm 77 years old, and hopefully, I have more time to learn about it. But what I understand is that services boundaries are created after a lot of consideration of multiple needs. To go against the agreements that have been made with due consideration has to be because of a highly compelling need. I'm a progressive politically. I'm fully committed to working-class, blue-collar jobs, and there's a dearth of such jobs and careers in this society and this city. Those jobs need to be in areas that are cited properly, that have a compelling need within the community, and that are in compliance with habitat and farm-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sally Calligan, then Andy Sawyer. Sally, then Andy Sawyer, then Oscar Blager, then Timothy Hughes.
Hi, Sally Calligan from Folsom. Thank you for the jobs that you've taken on. I'm wondering if council members Maple and Kaplan, I'm wondering what the process is for them to be removed. I understand it has something to do with where they live, and I would think that that would be a pretty pivotal reason for why they should be involved. So I was wondering if that can be explored in any way. I'm in support of carpenters having jobs. I agree with what other people have said around here. We want the jobs to be appropriate. The American River Parkway is known as the crown jewel of Sacramento. I'm quoting, "It's the only wild and scenic river corridor within urban area in the United States, and as such, it's the nation's largest urban park." This past year, I've been looking at numerous projects, and we have to, I'm not telling you anything new, but this American River Parkway is a continuum. It isn't just in Sacramento, it's in Folsom, it continues down, you know, north and south, but it's also a worldwide habitat. So I would like us to really consider how important it is. So Coyote Creek, we're losing 3 million, excuse me, 3,000 mature oats. We're looking at Rancho Cordova's project, and we're looking at the Leavis project. So, and that's just in this past year. I'm sure there are other things that I'm not even aware of that I've been in, but I've been involved with these projects that I've mentioned. So please think about this, not just for Sacramento, but worldwide. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andy Sawyer.
Mayor McCarthy, city council members, I'm Andy Sawyer, speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club in opposition to this annexation. Major concern is the effects on habitat for listed species. The report back you heard today offered nothing to address that issue. So I won't speak further to it except to emphasize our opposition on those grounds. We did hear a report back on the 21st Century Warehouse standards under AB 98 of 2024, but those standards are extensive, not just buffers. They deal with insulation, they deal with lighting, they deal with greenhouse gas emissions. It wasn't clear in the short amount of the presentation how much compliance with those standards was being required or explained away by saying it'll probably be applied by other factors. Given the severe air pollution consequences of a warehouse project of this size, you should be doing every mitigation measure possible to reduce those impacts and specifically require full compliance as a condition of the approval, not just assume that it will occur as a result of other applicable standards. Thank you.
Next speaker is Oscar. Following Oscar is Timothy Hughes, then Terry Burns.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for your attentiveness and endurance. So we've been hearing a lot about whether this project is needed or not, and I've heard conflicting information on both sides. I went on Buzz Oats website today for Metro Air Park, and according to that, this, as of this afternoon, there's over half a million square feet of warehouse space, quote, "available for occupancy." There's over 2.5 million square feet, 2.5 million, quote, "coming soon," close quote. The information seems to be that there's plenty of additional room on the site for additional warehouse space beyond what this, beyond what's indicated as already planned. The construction trade jobs that ASI would bring and the opportunities for workforce development will occur wherever these, wherever needed warehouses are built. It doesn't have to be on the ASI site. You can always approve this project when, as, and if it's actually needed. Until you have that information, I suggest you not take action on it now. Thank you.
Timothy Hughes. I have five more speakers, Timothy, then Terry Burns.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy. Good evening, city council. My name is Timothy Hughes, and I stand at the podium today with an interesting background of having spent four years in China, working in the sustainable freight and sustainable energy sectors. And so I speak, read, and write high-level Chinese. For the past number of years, I have been providing intelligence to California state agencies and state principals on developments in the zero emission freight sector. And so I've worked with our California State Transportation Agency, our CEC, our Secog, our SAC HMD, and most recently, Mayor Pretend Eric Gera's office, on how to actually bring some of these innovative and very advanced sustainable freight and sustainable energy technologies here to the Sacramento region. And so you should have in front of you a diagram and photos of a couple trucks, and these are known as battery-swappable trucks. And so last year, just for an understanding, China deployed 100, or this year, China has deployed so far 120,000 heavy-duty zero-emission trucks, over one-third of which were battery-swappable. That is in comparison to, out of the 240 trucks, zero-emission heavy-duty trucks we've deployed in the U.S. so far this year, none of which uses technology. And so this technology actually really emerged, battery-swapping, came out of response to address local air pollutants, and China has significantly reduced these in the past number of years. And so the reason I stand here before you today is I have been working and leading what has now become known as the California Battery Swap Truck Pilot, and we are looking for a home, and this may or may not be a potential opportunity for us to be here. I've been in touch, as I said, with multiple state agencies on how to actually make this a reality here, and so this may be an opportunity for us to bring this advanced technology here that can help subsequently to reduce air pollution throughout our state. So thank you so much, and if you have any more questions, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Burns, then Melissa Brahm, then Tim Matholda.
Thank you for your time on this. I'm Terry Burns. I'm a former member of the Natomas School Board, and I've mentioned before that when we cited the Passoverde School, it was intended that the campus utilized the adjoining open space to educate our students about science and the value of maintaining natural habitat. Last Saturday morning, I had the pleasure of joining a bird-washing walk through parcels five and eight. We saw lots of animals. It reminded me of the importance of teaching our students about the value of habitat, about the value of respecting animals and nature. They're going to be our future council members and community leaders. This is our chance to educate them about it while it still exists. I encourage you to do what you can to maintain the open space in Natomas. I will associate myself with the remarks of those who spoke before about any mitigation matters, that you get them in writing and that there be enforceable provisions as part of that. It's just way too easy to let that all go by the way as time passes. Thank you for your attention.
Melissa? I have three more speakers, Melissa Brahm, Tim Matholda, and then James Therwachter.
Hello again. I'm here on behalf of the Coyoka and Scolora families. We're the owners of parcel eight since 1960. It was farmed for over 50 years and then came homes to our east and a school to our south. We are the non-participating property owners of the North Point Development Plan, which means that our parcel is not a committed participant in the North Point Development Project, nor do we have any development plan before you at this time. However, do not forget that the environmental evaluation and recommendation, recommended mitigation for the potential future North Point Development includes calculations that attribute maximum amounts of traffic and pollution to our property, yet we do not have any planned development for parcel eight. As for the habitat concerns, our property is already covered by the Natomas HCP, which the opponents of the annexation chose to ignore when arguing against any development plan and annexation. As for the suggested traffic and pollution problems, again, we don't have any development plans before you. We have not proposed any roadways or anything that creates or emits pollution on or from our property towards the Westlake or school properties. It cannot be overstated that without any plans to develop parcel eight at this time, to attach any conditions to bring parcel eight into the city is premature. How can you condition a property with restrictions when you don't have any facts before you to show what the property development will consist of? We should wait to place conditions on parcel eight until a development plan is actually presented because there's no project currently before us. Any mandates created now are premature, and it might be irrelevant to the land's future use. By prematurely conditionalizing our property, you would prevent us from being able to exercise our development rights that you afford to other property owners. So please allow the annexation and the uses and conditions to be applied through the appropriate agency at the appropriate time, but not at this point. Thank you very much.
Following Tim is James Therwachter.
I was here last time. I'm a resident of the Westlake community. My name is Tim Mathalca, and last time, I got a chance to listen to the developers speak, to the city speak, and at that time, I was very much against the project after hearing what they had to say. And since then, I've kind of put it on myself to try and understand as much as I can about the kinds of things that are involved with a project like this. And I got to say, you guys aren't doing this right. I mean, if you were following best practices for city planning and zoning, you would have transitional zones in between a residential, a school zone, and then something like a light industrial zone. You wouldn't just put them adjacent to each other. I know that the developers have put some lipstick on the pig there, but it's not, it's not really following best practices. What it really is doing is trying to find, get as close to what the legal limit is requiring. So 300 feet, yeah, you might, you might be within the legal limits, but you're not looking at the 500 to 1,000 feet that would be, that would be actually, of actual, like, transitional zoning. The Westlake Master Community proposed having commercial zoning in between. That would actually follow best practices because in that case, then you would have maybe, maybe 1,000 feet of transitional zoning in between that project and the developers' site. And at that point, you start considering mitigation on top of it, right? The setbacks, the walls, the tree lines. That's, that's where the concessions start.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete, and James will be our final speaker on this item.
Mayor McCarthy, esteemed council, thank you very much for the ongoing dialogue on this very critical project. My name is James Therwachter. I'm with the California State Council of Laborers, and I represent, in my capacity, about 80,000 men and women who build and maintain our state's critical infrastructure. And I'm also a proud member of Laborers Local 185. I'll keep my comments pretty brief. I did submit a written comment that was pretty thorough today, but I just want to stress something that I think is reflective of many of the comments that were made this evening, and that is that our members aren't, and the members of the other crafts in the room as well, our members aren't just construction workers, right? We are community members. We are your neighbors. Our kids go to the same schools as the other folks in here. We shop at the same places, we dine at the same restaurants, we are invested in this community. So do we want these jobs? Absolutely, we do. But these are not short-term gains. These are long-term investments into the infrastructure, into the city, and into our families and futures. So I respectfully ask that you support this project, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
[applause]
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item, so I will close the public comment period.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the participation. We appreciate it. Some new perspectives added, some new issues. I know Councilmember Dickinson had some questions. I just want to start off with the issues that you presented first, because those are the questions that I, that I put before you today. So can you go back to the, to the map that you had up there?
Try B.
Yeah. Okay. So before we focus on the actual buildings, just to clarify, from, from the city buffer and the city vacant land, it's equivalent of about 250 feet, right? So there's, there's the buffer that the applicant is putting in, and there's existing city stretch, correct?
The city stretch is 200 feet, and then the applicant is adding a 125-foot setback. So 325 feet from the residential area to the nearest building.
Yeah, so 325. And then, I know this doesn't satisfy everybody, but if you look as far as some of the concerns, as far as individuals not wanting to have to live next to a warehouse where there's logistics and e-commerce all hours of the day, which is why I heard hours and hours among testimony in my prior job in the legislature about this. You know, if, if individuals are living in a residential area, Land Park, Town Park, wherever, Pocket, Natomas, next to, you know, an office, a medical, a dental supply, different type of issues than we're hearing about here with this massive industrial efforts with the warehouse facility. So if we had the warehouse, if where the warehouse would start, if we included the suggestion you have here, what's the distance between those buildings and the homes? Isn't it roughly about 1,000 feet?
Are you referring to Parcels Five A and B? Those are the larger ones that would be?
Larger ones.
Yeah. You're looking at, I believe I measured it at 1,044 feet, something like that.
So I just think that's an important perspective. I know it's not what people are asking, but somebody said earlier that maybe 1,000 feet would should be a minimum between logistics operation or residential dwelling units, and that's what de facto would be if there was a motion, which we don't have here tonight just yet, and you incorporated what you're outlining right here. So just, you know, I think we should hold that for a second. And then the, the other question I just wanted to, to focus on is, is you have the circle of those three parcels, and we don't have the parcel just to the, to the north. So it's, I guess it's the northeast corner of the whole lot. So what's, what's going on there?
Yeah, the thought process there was that northeast building abuts an existing light industrial storage facility. There's no residences directly east of it. And so in order to eliminate the large logistics near residences, we believe that those three parcels would be the most appropriate place to do that.
Gotcha. But i- is that such a parcel based upon its potential footprint, that it, it wouldn't likely be that type of use anyway? Because it's, it's clearly much smaller than the rest of the big buildings throughout the map.
Right. In terms of a very large logistics facility with lots of heavy trucking activity compared to those parcels one, and two, and three, and four, you wouldn't be looking at the same kind of users at all.
Okay. And then, you know, we heard from the individual who represents the family or is the family for the parcel that's not in question here. What's that, what's that parcel? Parcel Eight?
Parcel Eight, correct.
Parcel Eight. So you're proposing, or we are proposing, to increase the buffer there, which would be the buffer from the residences and as well as the school, which would from the school individual, to how many feet? Does that again?
So that would be a 250-foot ag open-space buffer in addition to the city-owned buffer. So if you're looking at the total from a residence all the way across the buffer, 450 feet.
450. And, and, and we're not proposing at this time to have the use-type, basically, restrictions in that lot as well, because there's not a project here today? Is that why?
Correct, yeah. The rest of the lot would be receiving pre-zoning for light industrial.
Yeah.
But as there's no development application at the time, there would be a separate process to determine what goes there.
But if there was, they, we conceivably could come back and have the same type of conversation we're having right here.
Absolutely.
And why is it that you included the additional buffer to the land that doesn't have an application before us today? I don't, I don't see, I don't have an objection to that, but just curious, how does that come in to the conversation today?
The thought process was just to further screen from the school as well as the residences. And by doubling that, we can stick with our available tools of pre-zoning and still make that accommodation.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. That's all my questions for now, but I'll, I'll come back a bit later. Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a few questions I wanted to follow up on. The last time, the last time we met, I asked whether this, whether this had been considered or incorporated in the update of the blueprint. I don't know. I, I was out of the room for a moment when you started, and I don't know if you addressed that or not, but did you, did you check that?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. The SECOG blueprint has just been updated. And the question I had was whether or not this, this location was addressed or included in that update of the blueprint.
Hi, Cheryl Hodge, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. SECOG was very much aware of this project, but because it was in the planning process, it was not included in the blueprint. So it would be in the next cycle if, if this project were to be approved.
Okay. So they didn't, they didn't choose to include it despite being aware of it?
Right. They don't, yeah.
I also was curious, and I didn't have a chance to look at this personally, at the, I ask questions about what the traffic analysis showed on, particularly on I-5 as a result of, of this project. Was there a significant impact on traffic with respect to I-5 or anywhere else as, as a result of this project in terms of what the EIR analyzed?
Yes. So we received from our Public Works Department that while the project does contribute to traffic, the applicant is required to improve both freeway facilities and local roadways per the development agreement and the conditions of approval to account for any increased capacity requirements.
So, so local roads, I understand. And what was the first part of that?
That the project generally contributes to traffic.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, oh, I'm sorry. And then the improvements include local roads and?
Freeway facilities and local roadways.
So it contemplates improvements to I-5?
Interchange, yes.
Cheryl, any elaboration you can give us?
Sure. The project contemplates and is conditioned to provide improvements to the Metro Airpark interchange, and also Bayou Way is going to be improved in the future as well.
Oh, okay. So there's, there's no, there's, there's no proposed requirement to actually improve I-5 itself?
There's not, that I'm aware of, no.
The interchange?
Yeah, just, it was basically shown that the interchange currently is not built to its ultimate width.
Right.
And that this project would be participating and seeing that completed in the future.
Okay. So did the traffic analysis show that congestion was not increased to the level of significance?
It wasn't increased to a level that would trigger any additional improvements on Interstate Five.
Okay.
And then there is requirements to implement VMT reductions as well.
Right. Right, okay. On the AB-98 compliance issue, you mentioned a few things in particular that, by your judgment, would, would comport with AB-98. And you, you said at the tail end, if I caught this correctly, there are other things undoubtedly that would come up over time that would require compliance. I'm paraphrasing what you said, but I, but I think I got the gist of that right. Did you have some specific things in mind, and did they include the entirety of what you believe would be required under AB-98?
So looking specifically at electrification requirements, at this stage of the development, the project isn't at the level of detail to discern those kind of things. They would be required to get building permits and go through a design review process, at which point that information would be more available.
Is, is one of the proposed conditions on the project to comply with AB-98?
Not directly, no.
So only in specific elements that also fall under AB-98? Coincidentally, is that, is that the case?
Yes.
And would there be anything that would prevent, maybe this is a question for you, prevent a condition that would require with, compliance with AB-98? Since its effective date is, is January 1st, I believe, would prevent compliance with AB-98?
No, you could add that as a condition.
Okay. Okay. I have a question on absorption. Thank you for the work you gave us.
Of course.
And we could have quite a discussion about this, but what caught my eye was, was the bullet that Metro Airpark is almost 80% built out. We obviously heard some contrary testimony to, to that point, but visually, the eyes, when you go out there, don't tell you that it's 80% built out. Now, I recognize there's a dedicated area of Metro Airpark, but can you tell me what the basis was for the conclusion that 80% of Metro Airpark is built out?
Correct. Let me get you the numbers. This was based on analysis that Collier's research produced, which is essentially based on what you would call the core area of Metro Airpark that is industrial in nature, right? There are other parts of Metro Airpark that would be hotel, freeway, retail, et cetera. We're looking at about 10 million square feet that has been constructed to date. There's about a million square feet that's currently under construction, which is a Costco distribution center. That constitutes about 78% of the entire RBA that has been approved for Metro Airpark, the core. It does exclude two, two properties, or properties that are owned by Schnitzer Properties and the existing North Point holdings there, but this would be what you would call the core Metro Airpark district. And I also want to just emphasize that that also constitutes the vast majority of the large parcels available there. So the competition, if you will, for Metro Airpark will be, you know, very diminished by the time this project would kick off, especially when you consider the vacancy rate that I also cited for, for 500,000 square foot plus buildings in the overall regional market.
Although if demand was such, Metro Airpark could have land that's vacant rezoned.
I mean, if you look, possibly, I mean, you would have to go and ask Sacramento County about that, but the, if you, if you also look at the original
I used to be able to answer that, but I can't anymore.
The, the, the original, the original plan for Metro Airpark was obviously on a build-out on the, on the order of decades, and we've seen it go to almost 80% now in less than a decade, right?
Right.
Which I think shows a little bit about the demand and the market for this kind of product.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, you, you heard reference to the Business Journal article that said 9 million, which is pretty close to yours, 9 million built and 13 million out of 22 million. Did, I don't know if you happen to see that article, but would you have a, a comment on, on that characterization?
Well, I think that may include some of those things that I previously mentioned excluded, right? So there's a 7 million square foot delta there, but that includes a couple of other uses that are out there, including hotels and retail, which is not currently really built out at all.
All, all space?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Back to, back to you all. We heard a number of speakers address the question of, of conditions and enforceability. And I'd be interested in your, your comment. There's a, there's a mitigation monitoring and reporting program that's attached to this. That, that requires a number of, a host of mitigation measures addressing VMT, addressing air quality, a range of issues, biological resources. I'm assuming that those mitigation measures required under the mitigation monitoring and reporting program are both incorporated, if not specifically, but at least by incorporated, in the conditions of the project and are, are enforceable by the city. Is, is that, is my understanding in that regard correct?
You are absolutely correct. Our staff, we have Environmental Services Section monitors and tracks all of those mitigations in the MMRP. So when a project does come forward and is advancing into the various phases, you can't even get a building permit, grading permit, or anything until it's verified that those requirements have been met. So we actually track every single mitigation measure documented and ensure that they're complied with.
And is there, does, does the city conduct some sort of periodic review of, of compliance with conditions by major projects? Just as a matter, as a matter of course, or is?
I don't think that's come up actually as an issue that I'm aware of. I've been with the city now a little over eight years, and my background's environmental. I was directly involved with tracking the mitigation measures for Northlake, the Greenbrier project. That's why I know we're very good about, you know, and it's, it's tough on the developers because they can't pull a permit or do anything until we're checking and making sure and requesting verification. So I just haven't known it to come up as an issue, because if anything is stalled, you don't get a permit, can't move forward.
Well, I've known in my experience to, to be an issue that can come up over, over time, whether, whether conditions continue to be complied with or not. That's why I was just wondering if the city had any.
I think we're just really good.
Sort of routine. That, that may be the case. I wanted, I wanted to drill down on one particular aspect of the mitigation requirements. And the, the MMRP goes into 100% electrical and concludes not feasible, or actually was looking at as an alternative, I think, and said not, not, not feasible, basically. Didn't do much more analysis or any more analysis of that, but, but looked at a 20% requirement, and then included some specific items. I'm not looking at the moment, but things like electric forklifts and other sorts of elements. And I'm curious the extent to which those, those kinds of elements would, would be required as, as opposed to voluntary, if, if required at all, under the mitigation, under the MMRP. Can you, can you comment on that?
To my understanding, in terms of electric forklifts, there are Cal Green standards and standards enforced by Title 24 of the State of California that the applicant would be in compliance with.
So it would really be a function of whatever the state standards or requirements are? Is that right?
To my knowledge.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Mayor. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Gera.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, let me, let me continue on that, because when I, as I understood it here, on the air mitigation impacts, it would require all tenants to have electric forklifts. And that's in, looking here at, where we go here, we're on page 410 of the EIR. Seems to me that, and, and then as well as requirements of heavy-duty vehicle fleet build-out infrastructure as well. But particularly Section 3, I wanted to ask about the, the forklift requirement, because that's one of the vehicles that are used almost all day.
Right. I suspect that's part of the reduction plan, as part of their air quality plan for the overall project, and that would be required if included in that and a mitigation measure or condition of approval. So, yes.
That's the condition, okay. And then in, I also see here in the And then in, I also see here in the MMRP related to parcel eight in the school, and, you know, to paraphrase it here, like if parcel eight is developed as a distribution center, then a health risk assessment shall be conducted for cancer risk associated with the diesel truck particulate matter. And that would be enforceable then by the local air district as well. Am I understanding that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, regardless of zoning it today, when that occurs, you would still require a health risk assessment for anything that's proposed at that time, and the air district would still have to review and analyze that and respond to that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so when it comes to, let me go back to AB 98 again, because this was, I think, the state, in its infinite wisdom, basically said that in AB 98, how do we coexist? How do we look at cities and counties that are growing at the same time addressing the health impacts? The applicant isn't required to follow AB 98. But as I understand how the parcels break out, how much in compliance would they be to all those standards? Can you maybe discuss how far they're moving in that approach and if the, and the steps taken that would require? Because some of this is required in the EIR as part of the mitigation efforts that are almost, that are almost verbatim from AB 98.
Right. I'll speak mostly to the setback and buffer requirements of AB 98. So, as mentioned previously, those parcels, 5D, 5E, and 5F, would be prohibited from a warehouse distribution center. They would no longer be allowed to host a logistics facility. So, AB 98 wouldn't apply there. But even still, AB 98 requires a 300-foot setback for buildings that are less than 250 square feet, which those ones are, that are within 900 feet of a sensitive receptor. Those buildings are at a minimum, the loading bays are at a minimum 325 feet from any sensitive receptor. So, that exceeds what would be required of AB 98 with the 300 feet. AB 98 also requires a 50-foot landscaping buffer for any of those buildings that are within 900 feet of a sensitive receptor. And so, the buffer that's provided by the applicant currently exists, or excuse me, the setback is 125 feet, which more than doubles the 50-foot requirement.
Now, those two larger buildings, would they, one of the requirements are, is EV-ready parking facilities? Is that also within part of the mitigation?
So, those ones are more than 900 feet from a sensitive receptor. And in any case, AB 98 wouldn't apply.
Even if they were, even if they were, if they waited till next year?
Right. They would still be EV-ready.
Yeah, okay. And then parcel eight, because they, unless they miraculously have an application in the next month, they, that parcel will be subject to AB 98?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. Those are all the questions for right now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Talamate.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, so, we have 193 comments for today's e-comment on the city website, and obviously the testimony from today and two weeks ago, and then the planning commission, and then the LAFCO commission hearing. And, you know, this project has gotten a lot of attention from Sacramentans, not just from Natomas, but from other areas. You know, we had people from the pocket emailing us, ESAC emailing us, saying, hey, we're Sacramento, and we care about this project, and here are my two cents whether they support it or oppose it. And I have known about this project since 2022 when I was a chief of staff, and I've been following it for quite some time. And it wasn't until a few months ago that I learned that my colleague, who currently represents District 1, had to recuse herself because she lives in the neighboring jurisdiction, that I stepped in to hear from residents and to hold a community meeting because my colleague is conflicted out. And, you know, and I guess my personal reflection, I wish I could have stepped in sooner because now, like, from summertime when we had that first Westlake Community Association meeting where I was listening to residents to today, I just feel like time has gone by so fast. And I've been on a search to get answers for the community, to, you know, work with the applicant and the project developers to also find those answers and, you know, move this conversation along as someone that represents Natomas, someone that sees, you know, my labor brothers and sisters at Target or at the grocery store or at Courtney Brothers the day before Thanksgiving, Karen. And, you know, this project, I mean, it has a lot of support and opposition. And I feel, I've thought about this for quite some time throughout Thanksgiving break. It's all I thought about, to be honest, because it's such a huge project. And I understand the demand for warehouses, and it is next to the airport, and it is between two freeways. At the same time, I did ask city staff, you know, last week for the analysis, the economic analysis of the demand or the need for warehouses. And I, and respectfully, you know, Greater Sacramento Economic Council provided us with the data, but they support the project. And so, for me, it kind of felt wrong, and I know Mayor McCarty said, hey, keep it to the facts only when we had the data as part of the presentation for staff. I wish that our economic development team had done their own research. And, and I, like, yeah, we have a large economic development staff, and I just wish that it had been us doing the research instead of having somebody else do it for us. So, for, you know, future projects, that's one of my feedbacks because that was a question that we had. Secondly, God, the setback. I feel like we've gone over it a million times now. I do wish that the setback would be greater. And the last time I had the applicant come up here, I did ask for Natomas Unified School District's wish to increase the setback, and I did get the answer no. So, to the applicant and to my council colleagues, increasing the setback, I think, would do good for the community. That's, one of the communities asks is to increase the setback and to have a say in the conversations that happen after today. So, one of the preconditions, if this was approved, for me is to have quarterly meetings with the community, and Mr. Avdis said yes. But to our city attorney, what does that mean for the community? Like, what are they going to be allowed to have a say in? Like, can they say, hey, I want this type of tree versus that type of tree, or this type of bush versus that type of bush? What kind of uses go in the buildings? Like, what does it mean for it to be a part of the development agreement? Is one of the questions that I've received.
Well, it depends on what the condition says, but as a general matter, once this project is approved, they'll have their entitlements, so they will not, you know, we could not. The condition means if they're agreeing to meet quarterly, ongoing discussions, keep the community apprised about any changes in their plans or in the project. Future projects will come through the city's standard process, site plan and design review. And so, at that point, the community could have input with teeth as part of the city's overall development review process. But in the meantime, the developer has agreed, I understand, to keep the community updated on its plans and when it's going to be submitting an application, so the community has time to participate and engage.
And then I know Mayor McCarty asked about the non-participating landowners. So, we are not putting any restrictions on them right now, correct?
There aren't any development restrictions in terms of only what's allowed, I guess, for the pre-zoning if this area is annexed, because there isn't a specific development project yet, which would be subject to a future process, future review, future action by Planning Design Commission. It would come back to city council as well. So, there are overall requirements that pertain to the entire annexation area, including the habitat conservation plan, transportation improvements. Those would apply to all the parcels in the future, regardless of the type of development. But development-specific restrictions or conditions of approval, that will be when that development comes forward.
Okay. And can I get the applicant to come up here? Mr. Avdis, what is your plan of action to keep communication going with the non-participating landowners? I know we had a conversation about it, and I did contact the people that came to city council last time to say, hey, have you guys had any follow-up to conversations? What is your plan of action to keep communication going?
So, after the last meeting, Vice Mayor, obviously, we heard the comments from a non-participating landowner. We had the opportunity to speak in the lobby to address some of the concerns that they had. I feel we sufficiently addressed those concerns. We have had in the past meetings, not all folks have been responsive, and not all properties have a single landowner. A couple of the properties to the north have several families that have their own representatives that we've been in touch with, so it's hard to gauge. We just looked to city staff. I know that city staff actually reached out and notified on several occasions and has had consistent contact, not with everyone, but I think the folks that want to be engaged, to be engaged going forward, we're certainly happy to include those property owners in the quarterly meetings. It would seem to make the most sense, but we're happy to explicitly have an invitation to those folks to attend those quarterly meetings.
Okay. And then since I have you up here, for the community meetings that would happen quarterly, what is kind of your vision for that?
So, we've had some discussions about that internally. Honestly, we see that as an opportunity to provide, you know, a constant, regular stream of feedback on what the update of the project is. You know, frankly, if the project is approved, you know, it, there's going to be, it's going to be a while before there's a shovel in the ground, so to speak, right? And so, we're happy to keep folks updated on regulatory process, on interest by potential occupants. You know, there is a subsequent design review process that is required with building permits that are consistent with the approvals. You know, we're happy to engage in early consultation with folks about what the bill, you know, what you saw are really just concepts, right? We're not actually proposing specific architecture at this point, but we're certainly happy to go the extra mile and provide those materials for review prior to when they would otherwise be required by the city. And, you know, I think the bottom line in terms of, you know, our commitment to it, and I can let North Point's representative speak to it, but I think what we've done on this project has shown a commitment, you know, to community outreach. Well, you know, I respect a lot of folks and their perspective. I feel that, you know, we have done extensive outreach, in fact, also relative to the park visioning on Egrith Park extension. We spent considerable sums of money and investment in outreach to the community to get feedback on what the potential planning of that project could look like. Again, all that was done in a good-faith attempt to show that this is a committed partner relative to this development, and I think certainly that will continue forward. So, all that is to say, you have our commitment that we in good faith will listen. Certainly, we cannot make everyone happy, but we will certainly listen to folks' ideas.
Okay, thank you. I haven't got other questions for right now, but just in case, might want to stay up here. Cheryl, I have a few questions about our HCP. And so, for people in the audience, Natomas, I mean, we were in a flood zone, and we got levy protection, we had a building memoratorium, we, you know, Mayor Heather Fargo gave the blessing to help build out Natomas and created the HCP, Natomas Basin Conservancy, to protect farmland, to also allow for flood, you know, mitigation. And so, you know, this is just so many years in the making, and Natomas just has such a special, complicated history in the city of Sacramento. And we have a lot of projects currently in the works that are going to impact the communities living north of the river, from Grand Park to Upper West Side to now Airport South. And so, there's just a lot of concern in the community about how we're going to continue to protect our Natomas Basin. So, my question to you is for the city is, why is it okay for the city to approve a project in the habitat conservation plan area without a permit, but it's not okay for the county to do it? And maybe for legal or for you, I don't know.
Thank you for that question. It's a great question, and there is some significant differences with this project that is going through a city process versus a county process. I don't want to comment too much on Grand Park or Upper West Side because that's not what is before you this evening.
Right.
Because that could be a whole nother meeting, right?
I was trying to say, kind of what's going on out there.
So, I mean, the difference is it is going through a city process. A portion of the property is already within our habitat conservation plan permit boundary, which means the city's incidental take permits that were issued, which allows the development in South Natomas and North Natomas, includes those two parcels. We've also been given a authorized amount of development acres to the city of Sacramento, which is 8,050. The portion of the annexation area that's not within the permit boundary but has been conditioned to comply with the HCP, including pre-construction biological surveys, payment of HCP fees, and land dedication. If that area were to annex into the city and the city, you know, approves the development and moves forward, we would not go over that 8,050. There would still need to be some level of permit process approval with the wildlife agencies in the future for that property that's outside the existing HCP permit boundary. But the difference is this project does not exceed our 8,050. A portion of it is already in our permit boundary, and it completely will comply with the HCP, which benefits the HCP versus undermine it.
Got it, okay. And then the tax exchange agreement with the county, what is the timeline for that? And does the action tonight hurt, or like, does negotiating power here, like, what does it do for the city of Sacramento as we're going to have a lot more calls for service? And so, how does it impact us with our city-county tax exchange agreement?
So, this evening, your decision on this project, whether to move forward or not, does not necessarily, it would affect the tax exchange agreement, because that wouldn't move forward if the project doesn't move forward. But the tax exchange agreement is separate. It would come to city council. Right now, I'm anticipating bringing it to city council this month by the end of the year. And the decision tonight doesn't hurt or necessarily benefit or anything else the negotiations because we're near completion with that with the county.
Okay, manager?
Tax exchange agreement is scheduled next week.
Okay.
You should be just nailed it all down and gotten ever, all sides signed off on it. So, our intent is to bring it next week.
Well, conditionally, if this measure was successful, obviously.
Okay. My last question for now. I'm sorry, I got muted. I'm almost done with my line of questions. My next question is the trucks. I know when I went to the community meeting in Westlake, I mean, I think all our neighborhoods have this problem because there's not enough places for large semi-trucks to park, but residents are concerned about large semi-trucks parking inside the neighborhood. And so, what is our plan of action for that?
This is another topic that we discussed with the Public Works Department to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Their response was that the roadway network for the development has been designed to prevent large semi-trucks from entering neighborhoods via the roundabout and appropriate signage, something like no trucks would be an example of what's on that sign. Additionally, we can install truck route and no-truck signage at the entrances of nearby neighborhoods to further enforce this restriction. All proposed street sections for this project exclude on-street parking per the tentative map, and that was their response in how to handle the large trucks potentially parking.
Okay. That's all my questions for now. I want to see if any of my colleagues have anything else.
Okay. Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Jennings?
Yeah, I just wanted to... The opportunity to thank all those who came out today and speak tonight. As you can see, this project has generated a number of comments, not only from the community adjacent to the project, but from around the city. There's also mention about the ecomments that have been on as well. And I know that decisions like these require those of us elected to strive for balance, to balance the impact against the benefits. It's a complicated decision and one that requires a thoughtful review, which you've seen that we've exhibited for the last three and a half hours. When the council discussed at one point in time the Upper West Side project, I agreed that the city needed to express concern with the project as presented. Don't take these issues lightly that have been brought up tonight, and given the information presented, I feel that the project provides a net benefit to the city. Our staff has provided us with information, I know shows, that the project will be in compliance with all agreements, regulations, as well as all laws. It's located adjacent to the airport, I-5, and an approved heavy truck charging station. The developer has agreed to restrict the uses in the area nearest to the existing That said, the jobs and potential tax revenue, I heard a number of 30 million in tax revenue will be significant, and they are well-needed. I know that those who are in opposition of this project, my position will not be welcome. This is an example of having to look at a project and work through the trade-offs. This is never easy, and in the end, there are those who will agree and those who will not. I will be supporting this project moving forward. I will be supporting it in order to make a difference in our city, in the community, and in our region.
Is that a motion, Mr. Jennings?
I'll make that a motion.
Second, I support your motion. I know Councilmember Garrett wants to talk to Mr. Jennings, in large part because I think that it was... Do you want to interject here?
So, to confirm, the materials that were posted on November 26th, after the last hearing, reflect the 250-foot buffer, so your motion includes that. The amended materials that were posted today make a minor modification to clarify that staff recommendation includes adopting the pre-zoning ordinance, which will zone that land ag land. So, your motion will be to move staff recommendation as amended by the materials posted on the 26th and December 2nd with the following three conditions, if I followed everything. The PUD, the slide that Cheryl showed, the PUD will include the restriction that warehouse distribution centers are prohibited on Parcels 5D, E, and F. The developer will meet quarterly with the North Natomas Community Coalition to keep the community updated on the developer's plans and progress on the project. And then, was there trees? I believe the developer also volunteered to plant trees, is that correct, on Parcel 8? Is that right, or no?
We volunteered on Parcel 5 on the property we own. We don't own Parcel 8, so we can't...
So, the tree, but the trees on...
Right. So, let me clarify, the school district, I did have a conversation with Doug Orr, and we're committed, you know, outside of this project, to fund tree planting at that Passover D school, but that's the commitment, I think, are you talking about?
Okay, yes.
So, we're committed to working with the school district and planting the largest trees that have the highest likelihood of success in establishing with the school district. But I don't know how, I don't know necessarily if that's a condition here. I mean, we don't really have it as part of our project, but it's our commitment, and it will happen.
Okay. So, I think it's... He said it on the record, if you do not want to include that in your motion, it sounds like it will be dealt with in site plan and design review in the future.
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, so that's all of the things. The only... The last thing I want to note for the record, your question to Cheryl about the effects on the HCP, I just want to highlight that the city did do an effects analysis that's contemplated by the HCP, in addition to the EIR. So, that 200-page document is in your materials.
Okay, thank you. We have clarification on the motion by Councilmember Jennings. We do have a second. I would just like to continue that I do support this motion and the project as we shifted it the past few weeks, in large part because of a few things. If I look at... Let me first focus on the opposition. If I look about the opposition, I generally hear two main issues. People who live very tight near the area, who have an overt-sensitive view of what's going to happen in their neighborhood. And two, people have a perspective of the Natomas vision as a whole. So, the Natomas vision of a whole, I think the council hears you. It's in large part that we stepped up and spoke very loudly against the Upper West Side project, which, by the way, had many of the people pushing it who are the same side as this project here tonight. So, I think that we hear you. We worked with our city staff and talked about our objections. I know Councilmember Vice Mayor Talamontes talked about the Grant Park project on the north side of the city boundary. So, those two things, and this, are kind of this overall swirl of what's happening up in North Natomas. So, I feel that. I just want you to know that what I see with the city council up here, the majority of the council are in accord on two-thirds of the feelings of the overall Natomas project. But this one is different. I think that based upon the presentation with the staff on the HCP, we have the facts on our side here. This will be a net negative with money coming into the project to protect further habitat. I know the area very, very well up there. I concur that it's not prime ag area. It is a nice view if you're on the far west side of Westlake, since, you know, those project homes were built in 2004, and you're looking out and seeing the mountains for 25 years. I'd like that view, too. But, you know, there is no guarantee that I'd be there forever, you know? The applicant could go to county sometime in the future, or a future applicant could try to come to the city and do an annexation in years in the future if this didn't pass here tonight. So, I think that, looking at the overall perspective of Natomas, we're thinking about that big, big picture. On the issue that I heard from people in my office and read those emails, too, on the buffer and having a real impact next to your house, yeah, I wouldn't like to have an Amazon distribution center 50 feet from my backyard, 100 feet, 500 feet, I get it. That would have a big impact on our quality of life, so I understand. And so, that's why I asked the question two weeks ago, and I did push to have basically a de facto buffer, because you'd have the 350 feet with the city and the applicant buffer, plus additional 500, 600 with a restriction as far as what kind of uses can be in those lots. And if you go to any neighborhood and subdivision, like I said, East Sacramento, Land Park, Pocket, South Natomas, there are plenty of homes in those neighborhoods that are right across from a dental office, from, you know, light, light office, which would be in those additional buildings. So, I think that we did hear the issues that people rose up, that they brought to our attention, and we did answer the call to make sure we do have an adequate response for that. As far as the pros of this project, you know, I... Who doesn't want to support people who want to work on a project to build it? I get that, but it's much bigger than my friends in the orange shirts. This is a project that I think meets what the city's needs are and what the region's needs are for economic development. I think it's a fair balance. I think, again, the proponents of Upper West Side who thought that our staff, who was against them on the environmental issues, is for us on this tonight, as far as laying out the facts, not saying that you're putting your thumb on the scale, Cheryl, but just laying out the facts. So, I want to recognize that tonight. So, overall, I think it's a fair balance, and I'll be in support of this project. Thank you so much. Councilmember Dickinson?
I apologize in advance, some of what I say is going to be repetitive to what's been said so far, but I do want to express my appreciation to all who've engaged in this debate, because it's an important debate, and it signifies a lot of issues that are challenging to us as a city, and I would submit as a reason, as a region, rather. It does, I think, as Councilmember Jennings said, cause us to consider benefits and detriments in analyzing the appropriate and best course of actions. Some of the benefits have been cited and are obvious, the proximity to the airport, which is a major economic driver for this region, including the city. The proximity to the interchange of the major east-west and north-south freeways and methods of surface transportation. On the other hand, the site occupies a sensitive environmental location and is somewhat near residences and a school, certainly close enough that the concerns that have been expressed are, in my view, quite legitimate and quite valid. In looking at the variety of costs and benefits, I... It leads me to the following conclusion. Sacramento International is a unique regional asset, and it's no secret, I've long been a champion of enhancing its capacity, its capability, and its services. It's critical that Sacramento International succeeds. For us to succeed, I would submit, both in the city and in the region as a whole. Just as Metro Air Park supports cargo traffic at International, so too will this project. The location is nearly ideal, as well for surface transportation goods movement, also a critical element for us. But again, we keep coming back to the sensitive habitat and environmental character of the location. In looking at that issue, I think it's unavoidable to ignore it. You cannot ignore the conclusion of the Natomas Basin Conservancy, which has found that, in its own analysis, while not taking a position on this application or this project before us, its own analysis that the benefits of the project, including extensive mitigation, outweigh the shortcomings or the losses. And I think, as the city staff noted, this project can be accommodated within the cap for development under the HCP that the city agreed to all those years ago. While the buffers and other mitigation measures perhaps arguably could be more robust, you cannot, I think, conclude fairly that they're insufficient to address foreseeable project impacts. I would offer that, for my part, I would add a condition that would require compliance with AB 98. We're a month away from its effective date, and it seems to me to make sense to incorporate that into the action that we take on this project, which really, and actually, as the proponent noted a moment ago, is really still on a long course to ever, as he put it, turning a shovel. So, weighing all these effects, I will support this project. While I support the project, though, I would add a cautionary note, based on my experience with Metro Air Park. I suspect that, given absorption rates, we've had a little debate about that, and available warehouse and industrial land in the region, build-out of this project will neither be as rapid as the proponents hope, nor the residents fear. Finally, I want to say that, for my part, this decision does not establish any precedent. Each of the development proposals in Natomas must stand on their own merits, and it is, I think, as has been articulated, not difficult to distinguish this particular project from the others that are pending or being considered. So, I do believe that with the addition of the Mechanism for Community Participation, which I believe and hope will be honored in good faith, with the other physical elements we've talked about tonight, including the buffer's landscape screening and related aspects, that this project does make sense and deserves to be supported. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess for me, I... You know, there's been communication about, when is the last time the applicant went to the North Natomas Community Coalition? And there's conflicting stories on that. And that's one thing with these projects that, you know, have 20-plus hours of testimony and 200-plus ecomments, they require better communication, and for people to feel like they've been seen, that they've been heard and listened to. And that's the most important thing to me, is to make sure that people are listened to. And so, as the council member here in Natomas, I will not be supporting this project because of that. And I am hopeful that, you know, with the quarterly meetings that happen, that the applicant works with NNCC to address a lot of these concerns that we have, and that we do right by the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice... Or, Mr. Garrett.
Couple of questions here before I make a decision here. Number one, was the motion... Did the motion include the quarterly meeting requirement as a condition? Okay. And then, second here, is it my understanding that the conservancy that manages the HCP has not taken a position or opposed the project?
That's correct.
Okay. And have they commented on other projects in the area?
They've expressed... They have written comments to the county and expressed concerns regarding the other pending large development projects in the basin.
Okay, all right, very good. And then, maybe this is a question for the applicant, or the representative, actually, for North Point. You're in this business, I'm assuming you're going to be in the business, hopefully, for a long time, that's probably what...
Yes.
And you see where the state is going. What does it, you know, even though you're not held up to the requirement of AB 98, how do you feel about complying with it, even though the state doesn't require it?
Well, it puts a bigger burden on the developer, right? I think tonight, we've displayed that we meet the requirements, especially on that eastern border, to protect the residential community. And, you know, I do feel that we have made a great effort to redesign our project and be thoughtful and be a community, you know, advocate here, and not just, you know, pushing a narrative to build an industrial project. We've been thoughtful in how we've responded to the residential community. And so, on your question there, you know, the larger buildings are, you know, certainly further than 900 feet, so they don't apply, but if you're asking about the smaller buildings, then I think the way that legislation's going, we're going to be complying anyways by the time we get there with Title 24 and the Calgary requirements that we already have to abide by.
And the question about planting the trees earlier on the buffer zone, is that something that is, even though you don't have specific projects in mind, is that problematic to actually doing that, to getting the trees planted earlier on the property that you have on Parcel 5?
It is problematic from the sense that you still need to run water and source, you know, for those living species.
Right, right. To get the infrastructure set up in time for it to, for them to manage themselves. What is that timeline in comparison to the development project? Where is the buffer, the tree buffer, in respect to your foreseeable approach? Because obviously, you don't have tenants yet, but where do you see that timeline?
Well, with working with city staff, we did develop a phasing plan months ago, and it starts on the far west, over a long power line road, and incrementally moves to the east.
So, there's an opportunity then...
We would consider, you know, a condition where we would plant those trees once we started development on that, what we call Phase Three, if we had to, you know...
And that's, and still Phase Three is at least almost, what, 900 feet? The edge of Phase Three is 900 feet from the residence?
Actually, further, but...
Further than that? Okay, okay. Okay, and then, and by then, you'll have the utilities and infrastructure to actually plant buffer trees, and obviously, you've heard that, you know, the need for evergreens and those that are specific to managing and catching particulates year-round?
I do want to be clear that we have to abide by the Airport Land Use Commission regulation, so I don't know if evergreens, you know, or certain varieties that somebody may have in mind are actually allowed.
With permitted by law, I mean, obviously, we're not going to ask you to break the law.
Correct.
But what is permitted by law?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, appreciate that. So, well, thank you, Mayor. You know, this is one of those where, you know, I want to thank staff for walking through this piece, and also to thank all the neighbors and advocates for really, you know, pushing on the city to have these questions answered, and to bring, you know, everyone that we have to our disposal to secure those answers. One of the first questions that came about was, why is this process even happening? And it's my understanding that anyone can, who wants municipal services from the city, it is our, it's in our general plan to require annexation, because in the past, you didn't have to. We could just sell you water, or sewer, or service, or whatever. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, in my understanding, we do that in the sense to also control the project and its potential effects on our residents.
Right. We would have complete jurisdiction over the type of development, timing, the growth, if we're providing services, including water supply, fire, police, or anything else.
And so, you don't see a conflict, then, then, even though it's in our city's sphere of influence, but not in the county's urban service boundary, that that becomes a conflict?
No, I don't. I think it's in line with our general plan that basically indicates that if you want municipal services and develop your property, or even if your property was developed and you're on a well system and wanted services, you are to annex. We're pretty clear on that. We've been taking a pretty strong position on that. I think, you know, the, it's in line with that. It's also in line with our Natomas Basin Study Area, which identified decades of interests the city has had in Natomas Basin, and acknowledges potential future annexations, as well as protection of the basin, and both of those. So, I think all of those are consistent with this project coming forward to the city.
Okay. So, then, so, you know, I think that the issue here, then, for us is always, is that if someone in any project wants to get services, or wants to be part of the city, then it's our, at our due diligence, then, to have the question, is this project good for the city and for, not just the city government, but is it good for its residents, and what impact, because any project will have impacts? So, here's my takeaway on these concerns, because let me start off with the ones that I find the most sensitive. And that is on the air quality and public health issues. And I do want to thank, you know, Terry Burns, you know, for sitting down and talking with me, and she's served a lot, served many years in Natomas, and I appreciate her constantly, her career and commitment to our young people, for bringing this issue up first to my attention. And also Ralph, you know, for his years of service for the California Air Resources Board, and discussing these issues. So, I don't take these issues lightly, and I don't know if he was a former colleague or left at that time yet, but, you know, I, you know, it's, as you've heard at times, trust but verify, you know. I reached out directly after seeing the letter from the Air District. It's noting that the applicant, through the changes that have been made through the project, have actually reduced their, the percentage of reduction in ozone generated was by 35% below the baseline conditions, and I'm assuming that's because of the new Title 24 standards. But, to that point, I went and reached out directly to our air pollution control officer, because I said, hey, you know, I'm concerned about this. Is this, this is, there's neighbors and a school. And from his words, directly, he had, he felt that, based on the conditions, and based on everything that has been put in place, including the requirements of electrification on the site, that the submitted air quality management plan, as altered, addresses the concerns of health impacts. And so, to me, that gives me much more confidence in where we are in the MMRP on the project here, having someone, you know, like Dr. Ayala, who's been working on this project. The issue, I think, of heavy-duty vehicles shouldn't be taken lightly, which is also a unique situation, that Watt EV is right next to this project. Now, Watt EV has its downsides, I think, the use of the solar panels and taking up space, I think, might have been approached differently, but the fact that we have a heavy-duty electric vehicle, charging facility right next door that's being built out, is important. I don't think it's enough, though. So, I will ask the applicant if, because I don't know enough about this technology here that was discussed today. I saw, you know, Mr. Timothy Hughes bring some stuff, but I will ask the applicant if they would be, if this project moves forward, if they'd be willing to meet with Timothy Hughes and the UC Davis ITS program on this heavy-duty electric battery-swapping technology for heavy-duty trucks.
Yeah, we would absolutely welcome the opportunity to discuss. I mean, I've seen some of the information relative to this technology, and it looks just, would be an extraordinary opportunity if we're able to locate it on the site. And it would require further amendments to the site plan and whatnot, but yes, absolutely would be willing to discuss that.
Okay, because as I see it, part of where this could be is off of the off-ramp and on-ramp, that's away from the residence. So, I mean, the benefit of electric heavy-duty trucks is they're a lot quieter, you don't have a diesel engine running next to you. But, looking at that facility, again, this is premature, you don't have any design plans, but I think if that is a place that would work, I think that's an important thing to start looking at. Is that, are you amenable to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that. You know, I appreciate that concern. Also, I think the verification that the largest building in this project is over 1,000 feet, well over 1,000 feet from the school, I think is important. Parcel eight is one of the concerns, and that's where I think I had the biggest concern. Now, when I read the EIR and the requirement of the health risk assessment, that requires us to look at the particulates from vehicle emissions, particularly diesel, and the cancer risk assessment, that will be part of whatever happens in parcel eight, as part of the EIR. So, I think moving forward, you know, with this project, that parcel eight will have to comply with that. So, that means in the future, there may be projects that are proposed that don't meet that health risk assessment. And so, I think that's an important thing to note as part of the project here. The second issue that really alarmed me, again, and I do want to thank, you know, Judy and the Swanson Hawks folks, was on the issue of the ecology and the environment, and the impact of the open space. And first, you know, for someone who grew up, you know, on the, you know, on the corner of County Road 86 and County Road 23 in Yolo County, I feel where the neighbors are who see that open space. I mean, it is beautiful. I understand it. I empathize with the feeling of having it and being part of your life. I had this discussion with my wife, who also grew up on Concanon Road and in Livermore, and had open space, and they were on the edge of town, and now they're like in the middle of town. And so, I do empathize with those concerns, but more so, I worried about, well, what does this mean for the Conservancy and the overall space in the HCP? And as I understand it, this project moving forward, and I think the slide that was shown at the last meeting probably characterized it the best, the, and this is why I wanted to confirm that the Conservancy is not opposed. One, there's, what I understand from this project is we achieve permanent higher value, higher ecological value land, to the tune of 278 acres, is that correct? Am I wrong in that number?
It's overall, actually, more, oh, sorry. It's overall, actually, more than that. So, there's 121 acres, that's within the HCP permit boundary, and roughly 278 outside of it, all within our cap. So, there would be a one-to-one mitigation related to ag, which is a LAFCO requirement, and then, the HCP will have its full mitigation requirement. So, there's land dedication, which will complete a 400-acre reserve right near this proposed project. So, yes, I mean, there will be more protected open space as a result of the project, whereas this open space currently does not, is not protected.
And my understanding is that even, and because I'm, you know, I heard today, that the ability to see Swanson Hawks and other birds on parcel five and eight, but my understanding is the Conservancy sees a value, a higher value in the other 400 acres versus this space here.
It's important to complete the 400-acre reserve. It's a requirement of the HCP, and this project provides that ability to complete it with the dedication of the nearby parcels. And the Conservancy's always very clear, they don't like to get involved in land use issues, they like to stay neutral, but...
I guess they don't have a choice in this one.
Yeah, well, it's hard to avoid it completely in the basin, but overall, yeah, this project, like I've been, you know, pretty consistent, and I implement the HCP on behalf of the city, I work with it every day. So, I know that this project will have great benefits for the HCP.
And as far as the benefits for the HCP, you guys are, well, not you, you're not a part of the Conservancy, but the Conservancy is meeting tomorrow to look at the fees.
Yes.
And there's, my assessment is that there's an interest in increasing the fees, so is that, assuming that we're, there's likely more than $13.9 million that'll be collected for the HCP?
Yes, because the trend has been, the fee has annually, it's required to be adjusted, which I also bring to City Council in a few months, and the trend has been, the fee's been going up.
Okay.
And I anticipate that after tomorrow night, I'll find out that it's going up again this next, you know, for 2026. So, by the time this project pulls its first grading permit, which is when the fees will be paid, they're going to be higher.
So, the Conservancy will have essentially another $14 million to protect the habitat and the environment. Is that, is that in my assessment?
Yes.
So, this is, and so then, this is where I have to look at, as a council member. I listen to the public and hear what the issues are, and what they're facing, what they're feeling, but then I also have to go to the entities that are regulating the issues. And having chaired the Air Quality Management District, and a lot of respect for Dr. Ayala, who took down Volvo, frankly, for cheating, and also the attorneys that are very successful in going after polluters at the Air District, I have to trust what they say on this project. And then, when the Conservancy is not opposing the project, and is providing at least some level of direction on where our best use of land protection is, then I have to go with the Conservancy in this project. And, you know, I was concerned, as a representative of a large industrial warehouse area, I have a lot of residents who rely on the industrial and manufacturing and warehouse space in District Six. So, I did reach out to the Power and Alliance, and I wanted to ask about whether they would cannibalize, this project so large would cannibalize the area, and what the vacancy was. And the outcome of this, the response was that they have a 4.8 vacancy, which is very extremely low, because then it makes it difficult for, if someone wants to expand or move around, and they didn't see at all an impact on their ability. I also asked if they had enough space to be able to take on a project, because frankly, I'd like some local jobs in District Six this large as well. But the reality is, the only level of space of this nature is our landfills, and, you know, old mining pits that can't be developed, and unfortunate decisions that were made a long time ago about how to use that land. So, to me, when I see this, I balance these issues, I, you know, you can't, every project will have challenges, every project will have some level of impact, and I do feel that a lot of care was taken by the staff to manage both the air quality and public health, ecological environment impacts. And from the benefits, I mean, clearly, I think this is one, whereas Councilmember Dickinson well-articulated, by the airport, in a place where it is creating local jobs, creating not only local jobs, but high-wage jobs with our local union halls that recruit our folks, and many of them are in Natomas, many of those halls are in Natomas. So, and the fact that the, that this is, because the question that I had asked was, and very rightly concerned, do these utility fees, water utility fees, is that going to put a cost on residents? And the answer to that was, no, Prop 218 requires them, requires the applicant to pay for all of those applications. So, with those points, you know, Mayor, I feel comfortable moving forward and supporting the motion here.
The public hearing, right?
As amended with the new conditions posed today. So, and I do encourage, and, you know, having gone through the Aggie Square project, where we had quarterly meetings after we approved the project, and there were still concerns, we saw the, how that engagement process, that true engagement process, actually worked itself out, and we were able to address and respond to things as the project moved along. I do think that, at first, we had a big turnout. After a while, once, you know, the residents, you know, were concerned and addressed their concerns, a lot of positive came out of that. So, I do support that, that true engagement moving forward, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll support the motion.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion, an amendment you're looking to close the public hearing as well. Okay, so you have a motion as second, with the public hearing being closed. City Attorney.
I just want to confirm, Councilmember Dickinson mentioned a condition of approval related to AB 98 compliance, but that's not part of the motion now, so is that a request for a friendly amendment? And if so, does the maker of the motion and the second agree?
Was that accurate?
No, just my request that yes to the maker and the second.
Okay. Accepted. Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Man, I might be that swing vote. Here we go. First, I just, I just want to say thank you to all of the residents who came out today to speak, and also to all the workers, all our labor partners who came out today to speak in support of the project, those who came to speak in opposition. You know, this shouldn't have to be about union jobs versus community. I just want to say that, right? I have always supported our labor siblings, and I have always supported and center residents' voices in any development project. And I think it's really important that we hear and center the voices of residents and community, including our workers who do live in Natomas. And for me, I'm really struggling with how do we grow as a region, but at the same time, mitigate and ensure that there's no harm done to our communities? How do we ensure that the policy decision we make does not have unintended consequences for our communities and for the environment? I often think, while this project is in District One, if this warehouse project was proposed in... in Metaview, what would I do? What would I do? And that's what I'm grappling with in this moment. And I, I, as I'm listening to my colleagues and I'm listening to the residents from District One, I also took an opportunity to look at the North Natomas Community Coalition letter. If I was the councilwoman for this area, I would have liked to see more of these conditions that were proposed from the community letter in the project. And this, I'm just speaking as a councilwoman. If this was a project in Metaview, I would have done everything I can to figure out how we can get some of these conditions into the project because the voices of my residents matters. Something I just also just want to speak to is that, you know, I heard from the residents in North SAC that came up today to say that they didn't want this project. They cited multiple health risks and concerns, I think you heard that from Mayor Protem Gara, though he feels confident that staff have put enough guardrails to protect those concerns. But they've also cited, community have also cited health risks and concerns ranging from air quality to traffic impacts. I am concerned though, I'm just going to say, I'm just going to be real with y'all that I hear the concerns about, you know, air quality and traffic impacts, but then I also hear comments like, we should also suggest putting it in Metaview. And I do find that troubling if you're going to say that there's, you know, air quality and traffic impacts and health risk. But look, I'm not just an advocate for District Eight, okay? I know my vote today will impact residents in District One. And if I want the best for District Eight, I should also advocate for D One. That is just how I govern. For me, you know, in this moment, I still don't feel confident in the mitigation for the concerns that the community has. I would like to see more collaboration and communication with community residents to add some of the conditions they requested. And I'm still struggling with this vote in this moment right now because I hear where the residents are coming from. I also hear our labor siblings talking about how this will produce thousands of jobs, right, as well for the region. But you all elected us to make these tough decisions. So this is where I'm at in this moment and we shall see how I vote.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the clarified motion. Public hearing's been closed, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Now.
Councilmember Pluckebom.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gara.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Just go to me. Go to me, please.
Mayor McCarthy.
Aye. Passes five.
Councilmember Vang.
I'll be voting no.
No? And for the record, Councilmember Kaplan and Councilmember Maple have recused from this item. The item passes. Mayor, we now move to council comments, ideas, questions, AB 1, 2, 3 reports.
His minder.
Result.
She was so gracious.
I really wanted to tell the story about you.
No, 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 no. I'm glad we did, in fact.
I make a motion to go past 9:00 PM. Also, if you have a conversation, can you please take it outside? Thank you. Thank you for coming to your council chambers.
Vice Mayor Talamontes just made a motion to go past 9:30 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's with Councilmember Gara, Maple.
Aye.
Councilmember Gara is in attendance, so absent is Pluckebom, Kaplan, and Maple. So motion passes. Mayor, shall we move to council comments, ideas, questions, AB 1, 2, 3 reports?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Oh, thank you. Wait, there we go. Thank you. I just wanted to make a few announcements about holiday events. And coming up this Thursday, as a matter of fact, from 4:30 to 7:00, we have Jingle and Mingle at the corner of Del Paso Boulevard and Arden Way. We're going to, with the North Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, light the holiday tree. There's fun and toys and things for kids and fun and toys and things for adults. So it's pretty much a perfect event, as long as it's not raining.
It's not going to rain.
It's not going to rain, okay. Then Sunday, December 14th, the Benito Juarez Foundation is presenting their annual Christmas Posada. And that's a free street fair on the 3600 block of Dayton Street in North Sacramento. And so it's from 12:00 to 5:00. All are invited to come enjoy that event. I see mariachi, tamales, pozole, a whole list, a whole list of good things. And then on Saturday, December 20th, at the Robertson Community Center from 2:00 to 5:00, Joy to the World, which is a free community event in District Two. It's a sixth annual multicultural holiday celebration with free food, refreshments, arts and crafts, entertainment, raffles, giveaways for holiday trees, bikes, and more. And more. So you got to be there, see what more is, huh?
Absolutely.
All right. So it's a great time of year, it's a great season, and we're going to have lots of good times in District Two. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
So we're going to join the good times in District Seven as well. So you can make a beeline straight from District Two to District Seven. Join us as we do the Pocket Canal Lighting. And this ceremony is also going to include Santa Claus. He is making a special visit just to the canal as we light up the canal as we do every single year. It's going to take place Sunday, December the 7th, at 4:00 PM at Portuguese Park in the Pocket Neighborhood for our annual canal lighting ceremony. There'll be music, hot chocolate, and lots of opportunities to take a photo with Santa and make sure you give him your naughty or good list. So come on out and enjoy this tradition with us. Once again, December the 7th, Sunday, at 4:00 PM at Portuguese Park. And then the Holiday Toy Drive, the Greenhaven Soccer Club, Assembly Member, no, not, yeah, Assembly Member Stephanie Nguyen and I are once again proudly presenting the drive-through Holiday Toy Drive benefiting the nonprofit organization outside the walls. It's going to take place on Saturday, December the 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the School of Engineering and Sciences parking lot off of Gloria Drive in the Greenhaven neighborhood. We ask you to bring your new and unwrapped toys for children ages one through 13. This is a real easy drop-off. You don't have to get out your car. There'll be volunteers there to take all your gifts that you want to give and put them into a big basket where you can see how many kids will benefit from the toys that you drop off. So once again, that's going to take place on Saturday, December the 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the School of Engineering and Science. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, don't forget, North Natomas has a lot of stuff going on too. So starting this Thursday, we are doing Santa in D One. You can find information on either my social media pages or follow along Twitter with Santa with D One. Thursday is Natomas Park. And then Saturday, we also have Santa on the fire truck heading around North Natomas. And we are doing two more nights the week after, but also on behalf of the Vice Mayor and I, this Friday, we are having the tree lighting in Natomas, but it's at the South Natomas Community Center. The fun with Santa coming on a fire truck starts at 6:00. So if you want three nights of back-to-back holidays in Natomas, come on out Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I know that the Vice Mayor is also having Santa on a fire truck in Natomas roll through as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to announce two holiday events. We have an upcoming event happening on December 6th from 8:00 to 1:00 PM. That's this Saturday. Join Sacramento City Unified School District trustee Chinua Rhodes for the annual Be the Light event where we're going to be putting up lights in the South Sacramento community by John Bidwa Elementary. And then after that event, there is also another event happening at Delta Shores from 11:00 to 2:00. Shoppers at Candy Cane Land at Delta Shores will be having an event. This is a free event for families and so come out. There'll be face painting, music, treats, and holiday ops.
Thank you. Completes council members. We have a couple, I think there's only three now, one guy left. We have a couple public comments.
Cheryl Charleston, Patrick Bankert, Keon Bliss, and then Karen Humphrey.
Thank you, Mayor McCarthy and the council members, to listen to my concerns tonight. Just to let you know, a little background, I have, I was born in North Highlands and spent my school years in Arden Park and have lived here, I am 70 years old and have lived here most of the time, lived sometimes up in Rescue and in a marriage and in a marriage in Auburn. I found myself homeless. I've worked for 35 years with the healthcare industry in Sacramento and then also worked in Placer County and for a total of 35 years. I'm a widow and I found myself homeless here. I called 211 and I'm not able to get any help and I'm sleeping outside and I've been doing that for a little over, almost three, going on to three months. And I can't get anyone to get back to me as far as the follow-up. I had my backpack stolen, I have men bothering me at night. I'm cleaning sober and I'm just kind of getting to a place of needing to find out how hard it is to get into one of the shelters. I have a, I have a case manager with Community Health West or Community Health North and I talked to her today at the library. She called 211. They say I'm still on a waiting list and I don't know how come. I've been said I take a top bunk, I'm in pretty good shape. I walk, I take public transportation out of a car and just kind of want to let it know I'm kind of disappointed in how they've handled getting me into a shelter. I have good retirement employment, I'm waiting for an apartment to be opened up on Auburn, it's a senior apartment on Auburn Boulevard. And, you know, it just seems like I've been on that waiting list for two years. So I just came to thank you to listen to my concerns and...
Thank you. If you can step over there, I'm going to have one of our assistants from the mayor's office talk to you and see if we can help you out. Thank you.
Is Patrick still here? I don't see Patrick. Keon, and then Karen.
When I say that the culture of SAC PD has a problem with anti-black racism, it's not just an opinion. It's actually supported by no less than four separate studies over the last 20 years documenting serious racial disparities in stops, arrests, and use of force against black residents in Sacramento. Discourtesy and poor service, according to OPSA, remain among the top complaints among the department quarter after quarter. And one officer in the room seems determined to embody that problem. Sergeant Darby Preston Lannan, right over there in the corner. Over the last few months, Darby has repeatedly singled me out with what I can only describe as a malicious enforcement of council decorum while letting other people, especially white members of the public, slide. On July 29th, he actually abandoned his posting council chambers to follow me into the lobby and threaten me with arrest in front of a crowd. In every interaction, Darby has been rude and disrespectful, even snapping at me with comments like, "Why do I have to tell you this?" Answer, you don't. For someone pulling at least $295,000 in total pay and benefits from this city, you'd expect Darby to hold himself to a higher standard of respect and decorum than the people he's sworn to serve. But he doesn't. And sadly, there are far too many people with anti-black attitudes like Darby's within the ranks of the police department. Now, I get it. My First Amendment rights feel very inconvenient for some of you that believe you have some fictional right to emotional and psychological comfort. I know you consider any raising of anger as being impolite or issues of racism to be discourteous. And it can be scary when someone dares to raise such issues as uncomfortable as racism in our city culture, especially if it's expressed in an angry tone. What I need you to understand is that respect is a two-way street and politeness is neither synonymous nor substitute for respect. None of us learn from a place of complacency. Discomfort is at...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Karen Humphrey.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Your speaker time is complete. Please take your seat. Keon Bliss, you're now in violation of council rules or procedure. If you don't discontinue speaking, you'll be asked to leave.
Next speaker.
Karen Humphrey. And Ms. Humphrey is our final speaker.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. And I really appreciate the time to speak to you and I will be quick, we've been very patient this evening. I'm Karen Humphrey, I'm a local resident representing the Housing and Homelessness Local Organizing Committee of Sacramento Area Congregations Together, known as SAC Act. SAC Act is extremely concerned about the potential impact of the newly issued Notice of Funding Opportunity, or NOFO, by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to fund programs for the coming year. Very briefly, Congress a year ago authorized a two-year cycle for this HUD funding and it was anticipated that most or all of the funding of the existing contracts would be extended for at least one year at about the same level of funding. Instead, two weeks ago, HUD released a NOFO with a process squeezed into about two months that drastically changes the policies and rules governing the allocation of funds. It changes, affects eligibility, timing of funds, new rules for grantees. It's a dramatic revision of federal support for housing and homelessness, not just here in Sacramento County, but nationwide. Its most immediate impact will be to potentially reduce the funding for permanent supportive housing by about two-thirds, threatening a return to homelessness for many elderly and disabled recipients of housing support. The impact could be mitigated in the short term by asking Congress to go back to the original plan to extend the current grants through FY '26, a provision that can be implemented in the Housing Appropriations Bill now before Congress. It's possible the city is already actively engaged with our congressional representatives, including Senators Padilla and Schiff, but we haven't heard that and we believe a concerted action is really important to keep HUD funding on an even keel for a year while adjustments can be made for the future. We request the city council direct staff to do the following. Bring back a resolution expressing strong city support for setting aside the current NOFO and extending the existing programs for one more year at the same funding level.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, you have no more business to come before the council.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.